All right, it is nine o'clock. We are going to call our regular business meeting of the Clickcat County Board of Commissioners to order. Make your note for the record that all three commissioners are present. There is also sixteen people on Zoom to help watch our new formats. We will start with the Pledge of Pleasance, please.
Pledge of Pleasance to the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I do have one thing to potentially add for, but I guess we'll do media minutes first. I have a business agenda change.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the meeting minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty-three. My motion is to approve as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes for October ten, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Business agenda. If time is available, after citizen comment and consent and payroll warrants. So I guess I'd say make it a Roman numeral seven down there to slot HR in to talk about the planning posting stuff. If they're quicky, so he can move forward. And he's going to be here early in case we're ready early.
Okay.
That's the only change I had.
Do you have anything, Commissioner?
No, I do not.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion.
Sorry, sir. The executive session we have here for solid waste is not on the posted agenda. I added it yesterday to the blue card. So can you make a note of that as might as well call it an add-on?
Okay. Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with three add-on, add-on, add-ons. Number one being the FSEC reimbursement contract discussion. Number two, including a planning posting discussion under the miscellaneous reports, as well as an executive session for solid waste contract negotiations at the end of the day.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All this favor of approval of the business agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all. All right, we will move into our first nine o'clock citizen comment. Pretty much same as the one o'clock timeframe. We're going to give you three minutes. Please state your name and general location for the record. Please keep your comments pertinent to county business. And we will move on. We don't have anybody in the room. I see Leslie has a hand up. Leslie, go ahead. You can start our public comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you.
Morning.
I'm Leslie Naromore. I am the Executive Director of Washington Gorge Action Programs or WAGAAP. And for the past two weeks, our community action agency has been actively debunking untrue myths and comments about houselessness that have been made publicly during the City of Goldendale and Clickatuck County Commission meetings. The city and your commission have asked to hold a workshop with WAGAAP and DSHS to discuss the perceived homeless problem. And I am reaching out to say yes, we are always available to work with our partners to help all people of our communities throughout Clickatuck and Skamania Counties. Although I have had a chance to have a conversation with City Administrator Pat Munyon and an email exchange with Commissioner Christopher, neither group has scheduled a workshop. I would like to ask that we do that today so that it is on our schedules and the public has noticed to attend. But before we meet, let me once again address a couple of items. WAGAAP is a human services organization dedicated to helping individuals, families, and communities address basic human needs. This includes providing emergency shelter for, to those who find themselves houseless for any reason. It also includes helping community members transition to permanent housing as they get back on their feet. Permanent housing is always the end goal. We do not have a shelter in Goldendale. We have one in Benjen and one in Stevenson. When shelter is not available and there is no other option, WAGAAP does hand out tents and sleeping bags. But in the last year, we have distributed less than ten in Goldendale. Document recording fees are only one way the affordable housing programs are funded. The amount collected has not been rising in recent years due to current interest rates, and it is state mandated how those funds are spent. If the fees are not used in the county in which they were levied, they will eventually be taken away and given to another county to be used for the same purpose. Transportation issues seem to have been taken out of context. WAGAAP does not bus people into Goldendale or anywhere else. However, we do support access to public transportation in our rural area. We do provide clients with a gorge pass to help them have mobility and access to communities throughout the gorge on both sides of the river. This essential service provides people a way to get educational, employment opportunities, grocery shopping, medical appointments, social service appointments, and more. One thing that I do think that you need to be aware of is that the White Salmon DSHS office has permanently closed. This means that yes, there has been an influx of persons seeking services at the Goldendale DSHS office because they have no other choice. I am meeting with our DSHS Regional Director on the thirty-first to see how WAGAAP can partner to address this issue. Working together and having compassion for our most vulnerable community members benefits us all. Helping people to feel safe and secure allows them to move forward. Improving their options for housing helps individuals and families to get back on their feet and contribute to the community in which they choose to live. I look forward to discussing how we can embrace all community members, which helps us all thrive. And I am respectfully requesting that we hold this workshop before the end of the day, November seventh, as I'll be away on leave from November eighth through twenty-ninth. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do believe that date has already been set. I'm checking with my clerk. Okay, I thought it was like November-ish.
It was supposed to be November twenty-eighth.
Okay.
That's so long.
Okay, so it sounds like the city's original plan was November twenty-eighth because they're having issues getting all of their people in the same day. We're pretty flexible, so you might reach out to the city and try to coordinate a day with them that, that works because we're just going to do it whenever they tell us works for them and you. So. All right, next up, who else online? I don't have my screen ready. There we go.
I would like to speak.
Gabrielle, go ahead.
These grand public works, they're asked on their vacation hours and the extended use date. They work hard for the county. And it's a way in which the county can start performing in a way that they honor people that work for the county. Please stop smearing WAGAAP with the debunk story. They do an invaluable service for the most vulnerable of our community. And the smear campaigns that exist coming from the county commissioner boards are appalling. And you need to, you need to readdress how you conduct yourself on that level. On FLOCK, these are just points of concerns, the unintended consequences and constitutional guarantees conflict. How do you safeguard vulnerable populations due to conscious and unconscious bias? How are you going to ensure those vulnerable populations are protected? What is the cost analysis, a cost benefit analysis for Clickatuck, not Yakima? And no new taxes? And what is the slippery slope on just how many cameras would be coming into the county? And finally, I want to talk about something that was brought up two meetings ago. And this has to do with Commissioner Christopher speaking about, you know, the budget is hurting. There is no new money. There's cuts in existing budgets. And then you make a recent proposal of taking a salary from a departed director. And you make it fair game for you to line your pockets with an outrageous suggestion that the county should pay seventeen hundred dollars a month to hold a rental. I, I wonder if you intend to speak to the prosecutor of what conflict of interest looks like? And what it means in a county to have open bidding? It, it, I, I've spent a year in, in discussing with this county commission the need for childcare. And I just was blown away when I hear you suggest that you would have the county pay seventeen hundred dollars for you to hold an apartment that may or may not get used because there is a housing crisis.
To go forward.
I mean, I literally have a couch and can provide childcare for the cost of at-a-girl. So thank you for your time.
I, I just want to correct you right off the bat. I was never planning on renting my rental to the county. That would be an obvious conflict. That was never anything that I said. I would encourage you to go back and watch the recording to get your facts straight. I would not do that. It's a plain Jane conflict and anybody in their right mind would know it. But that's.
You need to look at the tape. You need to look at the tape, sir.
Can you please mute her? Your time is over, ma'am. I'm just saying, get your facts straight. I never said that I was renting my rental unit and billing it to the county. That's ridiculous and ludicrous. So. Next public statement. Anybody else online have a public statement for the Board of Commissioners yet? Seeing none. Going once. We're not going to be open for a full half an hour. We're going to take comment until comment's over and then we're going to close citizen comment. So if you want to comment, you need to do it now. Going twice.
I can't find a raise my hand, but I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
This is Becky Miles. I'm from White Salmon. And this is in regard to the flock cameras. I'm wondering, is there going to be some sort of presentation in White Salmon? On this, I heard you had one in Lisle, although I have no idea where you advertised that. And I just want to know more about that. And I see that the presentation today is after our public comments. And I'm wondering when you will be taking public comment once that presentation has been made.
Very good questions, and I'm sure we'll have answers for you if you want to hang on just until citizen comment is over.
Okay.
Good questions, though. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? Going once. Going twice. All right, with that, I will close citizen comments and open it for my seatmates to have any responses they so choose.
Go ahead. Yeah, Leslie, I share your frustration. I'm particularly frustrated today with nonsense, and it seems to be a time waster. It seems to set off speculation and drama, and I can't tell you how much time I spend unwiring a lot of things. And I'm so sorry for what you've gone through and the, the questions you've had to answer about WAGAAP and about your facility for the children. You have my total support. I am on the Columbia Gorge Housing Authority, so I do see from that and how valuable the vouchers are, what they're used for, and how devastating it would be to the whole population, everybody, if we lost those programs for what we can do to help people move forward. So you have my total support and we'll keep pushing and moving forward. And I have reached out on some of the meetings, although I have not heard back from City of Goldendale yet, but there are people wanting to get in the room with you and get this solved. And Gabrielle, take me off the anti-commissioner list, please. I do support the things that you talk about. And as you can see with WAGAAP, I am a supporter. And I do spend my time on the Columbia Gorge Housing Authority Board, which I totally support Joel and his efforts. He does a great job. Very hardworking. As far as the flock cameras, I'm interested and I'm learning. And I did sit in on that first meeting, and this is for Becky Miles, and it was at Lisle Community Council. I don't know if the sheriff asked to be on the agenda. I think Lisle Community Council asked them to come and present because they'd heard about him. So that was an evening meeting and it was advertised to be on their agenda. And it was very interesting. The thing I can say is with crime and, and the way our society is going, some oversight isn't a bad thing, a, a way to help us in really severe situations. And from what I've heard, they're going to place these not around the community, but they would be on thoroughfares, just major places where we could capture some information if we happen to have someone at risk or, or need that information. But thank you for calling in.
I would start with Chairman, I would like to add, and I noticed in previous weeks, we had talked when we started moving to this agenda, we would add a public comment at one o'clock. It is not on the blue cards. So I would like to, to just note that, that that is something we agreed to. And with that, I would like to also allow Ms. Miles the ability to comment again because she was only asking a question about public, public comment. So that's just where I'd like to start with. Leslie, I would like to apologize, at least from my perspective on this board, for everything that you have been put through for the last couple of weeks. I am so sorry. I have heard from many people as well. I know the good that WAGAAP does in the community and everything that you are doing to support all of the those in need in this community. And I'm so, so sorry that this has blown up and blown out of proportion and become something that you absolutely do not need and deserve to have to deal with. I am so sorry. I want you to know, I've always been a supporter of WAGAAP. I think you guys are doing a great job. It boggles my mind that, that this has become what it's become. And personally, I would love to have a meeting today if we could to get to the bottom of it all. I went on your website and I looked at, you know, your emergency housing options and the vouchers that you give for those that need it, especially in Goldendale, to, to sleep one to three nights in the, in a hotel and all the things that you're doing to try to keep people off the streets and out of our riparian areas. I think you're doing a great job. And I hope that Gabrielle knows as well that that has not been my intent in any way to smear the good work that WAGAAP does. And Gabby, I, I want to know more about the flock cameras, just as you do. I, I see both sides of this. There's a difference between safety and freedom, and I also mainly really care about the cost as well. And how much that costs us and what we're getting for that as we move into very tight lean times. So I don't make decisions willy-nilly. I want to know all the facts on both sides. And I hope you'll tune in at ten thirty for the undersheriff's flock camera presentation. And Becky, thank you for calling in and being here at nine thirty. Hopefully you can listen as well and give us your feedback at one o'clock.
Thank you. I will remind my seatmate that the chairman runs the meeting and decides who and how it operates. So I would call a point of order and if you would like to remove me from chairman, you can with a vote, and you're more than welcome to do that. But until then, I will operate the meeting.
That wasn't asked, Chairman.
Doesn't sound like it. With that, I did say we will have a one o'clock citizen comment. But if we allow it open for everybody, we allow it open for everybody. We're not going to be making any decisions on flock cameras today. I can't imagine we would. There will be plenty of time for people to give oral comment or citizen comment as the days and weeks go on. And that, yes, I will have one o'clock comment this afternoon. Just like I said, I would, but if I open it up for somebody else to have a second comment, then I need to open it up to everybody to have a second. I try to keep it fair across the board, regardless of who's speaking. And, and I intend to continue to hold our meetings that way so they don't get as dysfunctional as they were a year ago. Under your control, sir. With that, WAGAAP, we do. I, I stand behind what I said with the recording fees. It is not an attack. What I said was not an attack on WAGAAP. It was explaining to the public where the money comes from in the recording fees and the recording fee costs have gone up. All of that information is correct. If you would like to have further conversations with this board about possibly even raising your homeless housing budget, this county might be willing to fund more projects for you. I would encourage you to schedule time with the board to potentially reach into that and, and see if that's an option. The flock cameras, yes, I'm on both sides of the flock cameras. I need more information and I need more data. And so I will be giving my recommendations to the sheriff's office on what data I would like to see before we move forward with approval of that budget. And Becky, no, it is not the county that's, the Board of Commissioners that's doing the flock cameras. So we don't schedule the meetings with the cities. That's the sheriff. And then they'll make the presentation to us today. I think they're getting a free trial run of it. We'll know more again today. And then we'll see what data it collects and and then I'm sure eventually they'll have an ask whether they think it collected enough good data to be something added to our budget or not. So this will be discussions probably going over the next three months. So that's what I know on that one and stay tuned for more. With that, we will wrap up the end of citizen comment, move on to consent agenda.
Mister Chairman, we have before us the consent agenda with eight items. Pulling item number one, the interlocal agreement between the City of Goldendale and Clickatuck County for District Court Services for further discussion. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with eight items pulling number one. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the account payable warrants in the amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents for the date ending October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to pay the bills. Any discussion on those? Hearing none. All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With that, we have a smidge before nine thirty. If HR has some questions on the planning. Um, yeah, if you can. Because I, I think we're gonna have extra because it's kind of the same idea of public works is scheduled for half an hour after gen. So I don't think they're going to take that, so we might.
What, what I'm here to talk about today is the challenges and opportunity section of a professional posting that I think's necessary and important to make sure we attract someone with the skill set for the planning director position that that, that you want to, to attract. So some of the comments I received for that section and Mister Chairman, okay, I'll just read them. The one is work opportunities or challenges include being the lead for the update and creation of the Clickatuck County Comp Plan, finalization of the critical areas ordinance and shoreline management plan and current industrial solar and wind projects with pump storage and possible data centers on our horizon. Others are comprehensive plan update. The director can influence long-term planning in Clickatuck County aligning with the county's vision and engaging the community. It will require swift coordination of budget and consultants in balancing diverse community interests. Critical areas ordinance update, achieving compliance with the Growth Management Act while respecting private property rights and overcoming potential resistance. And implementation difficulties is essential. And overcoming potential resistance and implementation difficulties is essential. Staff development, customer service training and mentoring can enhance the planning team performance and professionalism, but balancing it with efficient customer service can be challenging. Sub area planning groups collaborating with these groups on sub-area plans can gather in community input and engagement, though it requires effective coordination. Leadership and mentoring, the director can shape an energetic planning team and harness their creativity, but managing a diverse team with varying experience levels can be a leadership challenge. So that's the input I've received so far.
I actually liked all that.
I think they're consistent with what I've received so far. Want to think about it? I can check back in another open. I'll be your song and dance man today and fill in in the open.
I don't have any issues with that.
I can't think of anything else. Good words, nothing.
So yeah, I mean, if you're asking to use that as a template to run on, I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't think we'd have time?
You, you asked for our thoughts. We sent them to you. You didn't need to give my okay. I have full faith and credit. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so we were recently made aware of an unanticipated loss of revenue that was not reflected in the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget. Once we were made aware, I immediately pulled together all sides of finance, the treasurer, the auditor, myself, and fiscal and Rob to address the issue that we were facing. I have a proposal to adjust the twenty twenty-four budget on the revenue side of things and a reduction in, in one revenue.
Can I interrupt you real quick to ask a question?
Yes.
Are you aware that the Board of Commissioners will be having executive session today to talk about potentially revenue source?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I do not think that that factors into what we currently are facing though, at this point.
Okay, go ahead.
That we should still plan for this.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so my, my proposal would be to adjust the twenty twenty-four budget to address the nine hundred thousand to one million dollar loss that we were made aware of. We received four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of additional revenue from the landfill. Their twenty twenty-two quarter four payment was higher than anticipated. Their quarter two payment was higher than anticipated and their quarter three payment was higher than anticipated. So that additional above budget has been put in one twenty-five for now. Three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of unanticipated local and tribal consistency fund revenue that is in one twenty-five. I'd like to pull those two revenue sources into one twenty-four or into the budget in twenty twenty-four's budget out of one twenty-five.
What was the landfill number again for what?
Roughly about four hundred and twenty-three thousand. And then I would like to propose removing the hundred and fifty thousand dollar border county commissioners project fund that has yet to be expended in twenty twenty-three. It's also budgeted in twenty twenty-four, so I'd like to remove that with the combination of those two revenue sources and the reduction of that expense. We're looking at approximately nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and I would feel much more comfortable looking at that potential million dollar loss at, at that number.
Are you proposing not only pulling the twenty twenty-four but pulling the unspent funds for twenty twenty-three?
Nope. Just the twenty twenty-four.
As you might remember, we anticipated some of the shortfall in the twenty twenty-four and, and dropped the projected revenue from the landfill. It's the additional million dollars that we were made aware of for a total of one point five, one point six over twenty twenty-four.
Correct. So I would just need board's consensus to make those adjustments and go forward with the twenty twenty-four budget. And then I also would like to request from the board, the, that the board allows me to put together a team to immediately start meeting with departments and offices to start discussing. I'm, I'm looking at this more like an internal lean process to discuss efficiencies, what each department faces, challenges that they face. Just have those types of dialogues one-on-one with every director and elected. Not only will this assist with our future revenue shortfalls and strategic planning, but it will be useful to the Finance Steering Committee during the ERP and strategic planning, but it will be useful to the Finance Steering Committee during the ERP transition.
Well, for one, I'm thankful you guys were able to put your heads together and go through everything for a potential loss that we might have faced. I'd rather stay status quo like we had decided to do for twenty twenty-four and commit to that. And if that takes finding a few pockets or pieces that we might have to give up, I'm, I'm thankful for that. Going forward with this strategic team works for me. I've always wanted to take a look at who are we as a county? How do we function? How do we work? How efficient we are? And so this is another way to come back around to that. And I think it's gonna be a good process for all the departments. So I would be in favor of it.
Thank you.
I have a feeling you will get your consensus, but I am adamantly opposed. I believe this should have been done in cohort with their, in, in whole with the budget as it stands. I believe that park fund benefits far more county citizens than some of the spending that this board has done in that budget. And I'm a no vote on the budget.
Thank you.
We're facing strong trade winds. I would like to thank our entire finance team for working together and coming together to find a way to fill this hole. I am usually adamantly opposed for deficit spending in local governments. Unless you create a rainy day fund for rainy days and guess what? It's raining. They using the tribal consistency dollars and the excess landfill dollars that we'd not been anticipated. I think is, is a saving grace that that we absolutely need to look to. Also, when it, when we look at the, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are set aside for parks. And when I think about twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six and us buckling down our, our boots. While parks are a great thing to have and are necessary for community living, they're not a core county function. When we're in a maintenance mode is what I like to think of. I, I know Commissioner Christopher also brought up that there's chances for increased revenue. And so I, I hope and look very much forward to, to having those options for increased revenue that could save, save the bacon. I trust my finance team and where you're looking at trying to make this work. I mean, we got bad news right as we were finishing the budget. And it's the worst time to have it because now you could open the whole thing back up. I would, I would commit to agreeing to what you've proposed. Noted noting that if we do get increased funds, that the first thing I would like to see is the supplemental that puts back that money for parks in there so that we can, we can continue to, to push to help our, our cohorts that are trying to build a pool down in White Salmon and as well in District Two and District Three. I don't know the actual exact process for being able to do this. If we need to have a public hearing in order to make these cuts.
No.
While I don't think we need to. I hear what Commissioner Christopher is saying. And I would not be opposed to actually having one so that, that we can hear from the public. Because if there's somewhere else that somebody knows and maybe Commissioner Christopher has an idea of where to pull those hundred and fifty thousand dollars from. I would, I would be glad to hear from that as well as I don't like making the rash decisions. I know time is running tight. But I'm trying to be fair with, with my seatmate as well.
So for clarification purposes, because there are statutes related to the budget's public hearing. We've had a public hearing on the budget. We can reduce the budget. The budgeted expense without a public hearing. We cannot increase the budgeted expense without a public hearing. We cannot hold a public hearing at any point in time from now to the end of November. We only have one other date that we can hold a public hearing and that would be the first week of December.
So I am, I am not interested to have another public hearing. I think the public is burned out on public hearings and public hearings and public hearings. Especially another public hearing that will do absolutely nothing and change absolutely no one's mind. Meaning it's a giant waste of time. I wouldn't rally the public to fill the room to speak to the board because I think the board is set on where it is. You've been adamantly opposed to the park money for years. So if you can get that removed from the budget, you're happy. And I don't, you can talk a good game and pander to the general public, but you, we both know you're not putting it back in. If there's more funding, if there was, you would wait and see if this funding is gonna come through before you make the cut. So with that, I, I don't wanna have another public hearing and waste more public time. There is, you, you talk like I have no ideas on how to get that funding. What I've been pushing this board for two years to make the changes needed during the budget. To put itself on the right track and this board has chosen not to since I've sat here. I've tried to renegotiate the landfill contract and, and to where I had them set to put a minimum of nine point one or nine point two million dollars in that contract and you sort of opposed it.
I think we need to get back on track.
To nine point five.
Mister Christopher.
I've tried to do what I can do and I've been outvoted. So I will just continue to be outvoted.
And I'd like to kind of reel a little of that back in. It's pure speculation about whether we would intend to put the, that money back in or not. And it's been said that that's our intent and that's what we'll strive to do. It is, we both, Commissioner Anderson and I have always supported parks and talked to the communities and worked forward on their ideas. But this is a time and a crunch where we have to look for the things that are the least impact. And for right now, that's what that is. And that's only a momentary thing as we move forward. And you know, the landfill contracts from what I'm seeing were negotiated for two to three years. This wasn't an instant decision. It was quite a battle for quite some time and we lost money. So I for one am not going to work on speculation with the people's budget or the people's money. I wanna stand on solid ground for what we have and what's presented to us and move forward. And I agree, I don't believe there's another public meeting necessary. I think we understand the people who hearts desire for parks and we know we'd hear from them, but this is something we have to do. And during our budget time, we were having to cut over six hundred thousand dollars at that time. And the parks was on the table at that time. And it was by a slim chance that we were able to put it back in. So if this is a place we can go without rearranging departments or losing people or impacting people's lives, I vote for parks.
And I think it's good reminder, the main reason we're here. Jen is in a tough position. Is I think we all agree that we have a duty and obligation to bring this information forward and to provide for a balanced budget before it's actually signed in a resolution next week to do otherwise would be a failure of good faith to the citizens in the process. And so I'm sure Jen would prefer to give you many other messages today, but this one.
Right. And I wanna make it perfectly clear in that because I'm a no on this does not mean I'm in favor of putting forward a balanced or a unbalanced budget. I just believe there is other pots of money that could be removed and some of those pots of money are unused money that haven't been used in, in years. So why we are continuing to allocate them, I don't know. But my goal is to always have a balanced budget, not to not. I just disagree with the the tools being used. So just wanted to make sure that was on the record and clear. Anything else? And thank you for all your.
It was my goal to, to look for an expense that wouldn't affect a department and office that hasn't been used, that wouldn't affect people. And change people's lives. So that was that was an easy easy grab for, from sitting in my position.
And I think Mister Chair, if, if we follow the process that Jen has put together, all of those will come up for discussion. Again, all the things you're talking about will come up for discussion again. Literally everything has to be discussed and looked at. So.
I guess, thank you for your support, Commissioner Zoller, for both of our beliefs in parks and how much parks mean. And that's why I was putting a pledge that if we do get the revenues, I would want it to go back in there. So I would, I would respectfully disagree with your characterization that I am against parks, Commissioner Christopher. With that, I do want to know where these funds are from the hundred and fifty thousand that you think that after we went through the entire budget, if there is a hundred and fifty thousand more to cut, what the, where these cuts are and if you could give that to that finance team, is that finance team is gonna go and look for efficiencies and cuts? Maybe we can find that since you don't wanna have a public hearing and don't wanna push it out, but I'd be more than happy to hear where those are.
Sir, the finance team was sitting in the budget every day. When you were sitting in the budget every day, we've had multiple debates over it. I'm sure they're aware of the unfilled positions. As it was talked about indefinitely over the budget. So if you wanna bring it back out and rehash it in a public air to try to throw me under some mythical bus, you can, but you're well aware of the unfilled positions. They're well aware of the unfilled position. The county has positions that hasn't been filled in years. It's, it's my purpose or my thought that we should not be going forward, thinking that we should be potentially laying anybody off. The first goal would be to not fill unfilled positions. And thin yourself out by attrition. It is that's just my thought. That's obviously not the board's thought and that's fine. We'll move forward with your consensus.
I would like to make it clear that I am not proposing any layoffs. Thank you.
I'm, I'm guessing you're talking about the only other position I can remember that's been unfilled is in the prosecuting attorney's office. Is that the position you're saying? Your, your thought would be to remove that box rather than the hundred and fifty?
If, if that is your only opinion on unfilled positions in the county, I'm not sure you're qualified to look at the budget, sir, because there's many of them.
I think we spend an awful lot of time on unfilled positions. We went round and round and round and round. And I do believe we cut some. But I also believe we held the unfund or the unfilled positions open with money assigned to them because we felt like it was crucial that we keep reaching out and advertising for those and get those filled for the good of the public. That's why we kept those positions the way they were and applied the budget to it so we could hire people. We did cut what we felt we would be able to. We didn't waste any, any thought or any money sitting out there waiting for somebody that may not come. We're working at it and looking for people so we can serve the public.
And I guess for, for clear transparency and posterity, there was the discussion and we did cut the senior planner position. Long-range planner and natural resources that we had not been able to fill. And we did remove one of two unfilled positions in the prosecuting attorney's office. That was a lengthy discussion, as I recall, and both Commissioner Zoller and I felt that the prosecuting attorney has to have a district court attorney and that is why we left that. And that's why I was trying to find clarity in which positions Commissioner Christopher is, is mentioning. Other than that, I don't know of any positions that we had talked about potentially removing from any departments. It's the last thing I would ever like to do is, is to cut services and personnel. But those were positions that had not been filled for quite a long time. And with that, I don't know if I answered your second question or second request, but that was the finance committee to do a leaning process.
I would like to build my own, my own team.
Your own team and I am in full support of that. I think you'll do a great job heading that up.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Ah, the joys. Still ahead of schedule. I can give you a little update yesterday afternoon. It's gonna be a very generic update. Had our meeting with the union and dispatch and law enforcement sheriff, White Salmon, Golden Dale PD to work on communications and creating a standard operating procedure among the organizations. And it, it went remarkably. I think we're on a good move forward with, with developing a task force with those users that can come up with some standard operating procedures to facilitate a better working environment for all of the entities. And along with fire and EMS. That's about, as it's union, that's about all I can give you.
Since we have a little bit of time and we pulled item number one, I was gonna do it under unfinished business, the further discussion of the District Court Services. I figured since we have fifteen minutes, we could have that simple discussion right now if the chair is willing. So the city of Golden Dale, it agreed to everything which included the all the costs. You know, you just look at the budget and it's all the cost and you do the calculation based on that. That was what we talked about the whole time. And the city of Benjen has emailed back saying they don't want to add the operating costs in there. The city of White Salmon is in the same boat. And when I ran the math, it was like five hundred dollars a year. I'd like to get this done while my principal says that you're getting the great best deal in the world. Currently, why don't you go out there and try to look at it to figure out what it'd cost to provide your own services? I just wanna get this done and behind us so we can move on to the next one. It's five hundred dollars a year for White Salmon, probably three hundred dollars a year for Benjen. Probably eight hundred and fifty dollars a year for Golden Dale. Where are you guys at? I mean.
I, I would say I think it's petty to be for them to argue over it. But it would be even pettier for us to fight over it. So I'm fine with removing.
I think it's been a long conversation and it's time to close it out. I'm glad they're willing to come to to this consensus and here we are. And we're moving forward. It's progress. We've gotten this much done, maybe down the line as courts are busier and we're see it's costing us a lot. Maybe we'll go back in and negotiate in a year or two years or we'll see how that goes. But I'm happy with where we're at with it.
It's interesting because I will, I guess I will back up to the user group that I met with yesterday. There were requests for different. Yes, how would I rate this? The, the software that they use, law enforcement. And apparently it's not being used to its full potential and there's a mobile app for law enforcement so they can do their, and so I think you might find a request coming forward to increase their software. Or expand their software packaging so that they can do their job better. This is for law enforcement, by the way, not dispatch. And one of the, the points made was by the Golden Dale Chief that they have an interlocal agreement with the county. So the county just needs to step up. So we might, we might be entering into another contract exception for interlocal agreement for nine one one services. So anyway, I just thought I'd point that out, yes.
I mean, I, I understand where the cities and the municipalities are coming from where everybody's had access to a lot of subsidies due to the landfill. And this county has always tried to spread that out. And that is gonna get more and more difficult. And if this conversation about the, the cost of court services and in how, how little amount we are talking here and the budgets of all of us and that they don't feel that they're paying for their portion of the operating expenses. Which is just the paper and pencils and stuff like that. This is not including the building, the lights. You know, when you look at our buildings and ground budgets for these, it is, it is astronomical that we're gonna continue to subsidize. You know, when you look at our buildings and ground budgets for these, it is, it is astronomical that we're gonna continue to subsidize. It, it's disheartening, but in the end, my goal is to make it so that all three are on the same level playing field that have the same agreement so that our staff doesn't have to count factor it a certain way for one group and another way for the other. You know, my, I was three quarters of the way to saying, but just, why don't you go, go figure it out on your own for a year and come back and talk to us? But I've never acted maliciously in my life and I've never acted vindictively, so let's just pull out the operating expenses and give them what they want.
On the contract? That's what I was gonna ask. How long is the contract?
I'm totally fine with two years, so we don't have.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I would imagine that they'll wanna pull out the same operating expenses of the probation one, but whatever. If it gets things done and over with and behind us, that's fine.
So was that, was that saying you want, want us to just send them a bill for the probation side?
I, I, I think the math is gonna be worked out the same and then that's gonna be the start of the conversation.
Who's gonna, who's gonna do that negotiation?
This board can decide.
Who wants to do it?
Haven't you been doing it already?
Well, we saw how that went.
We did.
If that is open, I, I don't have.
I, I met a loss on this one. It's taken this long and all we really did was add the rest of the court services. You know, the staff, which doesn't include bailiffs or anything else. And I think I would like again to thank our finance, Jen, with all the work that she did over the costs and what the real costs are that the cities wouldn't agree with, but I think that Jen did a really great job. Tried to use as much time as we could.
Yeah, we're, it's gonna take a while to get the order of business set and everything in the morning is gonna have to be somewhat flexible cuz it's gonna be depending on how much citizen comment we have. It could be ten minutes, could be forty minutes, so everybody in the morning is gonna have to be a, a phone call away. Although it's kind of the same thing. We have a good half hour here for public works and we know that's not gonna not gonna be it, so we're gonna need to fill some gap in there. We'll get it figured out. I think for the, in the long run, it will be a better, better organizational system. We'll be able to sign our documents faster, potentially get our documents to staff by lunchtime so that they can look over them. Or we're running out the door.
Somebody like to be signing the consent agenda then?
I was gonna say, speaking of which, we have all these papers in front of us. That's a good way to kill some time.
Think how many, do you know how many case repeated meetings we have per year? We don't have one for now.
Uh, we used to do them quarterly.
Okay.
And then sometimes I, we, over the years, we've had case repeating, case repeated meetings once a month if we needed to. I know when we were doing the oh, what is the in your economic plan? We had more meetings.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a quarterly and or when needed.
Yeah.
Um, these are all just for me unless you guys wanna read them. I will. If yes, I'll leave them vouchers. If not, I'll pass them over.
Are either of my seatmates going to the Gorge Tech Alliance meeting or the Olympia Gorge Economic Symposium? I wanna make sure that if, if anybody is that we can get that. Oh, bother.
I don't think I am, Jake, but I need to.
The tech alliance is this Thursday at six and then the economic one is.
If it's this week, no, because I'm going to Olympia.
Oh, yep, yeah, you'll miss it for sure. The other one I think is in November. Uh, it's the third.
Yes, and I won't be going.
Yeah, it says. Okay, yeah, so I'm gonna try to hit up both of those. And I think the symposium one has a minimal cost, seventy-five dollars or a hundred bucks or something. But it was, it was really good last year when I went, the discussions. Oh.
Find another hundred grand, by the way.
What?
I said they just have another hundred grand.
Yes, man.
Need, no.
Where's that?
But yeah, I guess that's a further budget topic for another day.
Oh, what is it?
Nope, this one's not done. Here.
No. Well, that's good. Um, are you ready to roll, sir, or no?
Uh, yeah, we're just trying to talk and, and kind of a hectic morning.
They take as much time as you need to do what you need to do and start whenever you're ready to.
Now, I think we're ready to start. I was just, we kinda had a few mistakes on our part this morning too, so we.
We never do that, okay.
So consent agenda has been going through, but I think there was a misunderstanding on the sixth year. The six, if everybody remembers, we had a hearing that we had to continue. So while, yes, it's done on a consent agenda, again, you know, I don't think we were clear. It is, we still have to finish the hearing. I apologize. But if we, we stopped it with the continuation of today at one thirty, I believe.
Oh, gotta love new programs.
What a coincidence that it's on the day that we're starting a new.
But I, I still think we're fine. We could, we could still do that if technically, you know, the signing date for the result, the time is is after that, if you're still fine because it's still a consent agenda item. It's just you do the hearing and then.
The formality.
Yes.
Do, uh, would it be wise for us to finish off that hearing?
Before we sign that paper.
Vote on the consent again?
Or at least, at least, at least those two items, the annual and the sixth year.
Well, I won't sign that till later.
Yeah.
So we'll be back at one thirty for the hearing? Yes. Sorry.
Is that here?
Yes. Yeah, cuz we did a continuation from last week.
Okay, the only thing we have at one thirty is a consider a boundary land adjustment on that woodland road. So we're adding something in there.
Commissioner Christopher, I would make a motion to approve, amend the agenda one more time, including the continuation of the sixth year and annual road hearing as we had advertised and mentioned on last Tuesday at one thirty after, prior to our public meeting.
All right.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to amend the agenda again, adding the continuation of the six year hearing and discussion.
Since we're, since we're doing this that way, I would also friendly amendment to add public comment at one o'clock as we had mentioned previously as well.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion, yeah, we use friendly amendment. Uh, motion on all of that, since it's a friendly amendment, it doesn't mean a separate vote. I mean, I'm saying, uh, all those favors say hi.
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 Can you bring the hearing?
Yes, I will. Thank you. I apologize.
We're, we're playing a new game here.
Okay, we have one pay estimate to stripe right in the amount of seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents for the annual striping program. And that moves us on to instruction.
Construction. See, so white plastic edge lines, whether permitting the contractor scheduled to begin work next week to get that project completed before the end of the year. Her warning signs and guideposts, we're still waiting for the contractor to receive those materials so they can get started. Our small works guard rail, the pre-construction meeting is being held this week with a planning, planning to start installation the first week of November. That's the guard rail that's going in on Canyon Road and the burnt up guard rail out on Dot Road. Let's see, on design end, we're, Biglen Highway area paving is on ad. We're seeing a lot of interest. Bids will be open next week on Tuesday. Our Sundale Old Eight project, right away negotiations are coming, getting close to being completed. We have fourteen of fifteen acquisitions made to date, which leaves the one. Bridge repair bundles, staff is working on developing an RFP to select a firm to complete the technical designs for the project. And our twenty twenty-three crushing project is on ad. Bids will be due on November seventh. That's all I got.
Okay, maintenance, east side's still working on the, working a little bit more on the cattle paths, finishing that, grading and hauling sand in preparation of winter. West end is brushing in the snow and area, ditching on BZ Glenwood and grading roads. Upcoming facilities, graphics and picnic table are on schedule to be complete. Uh, jail roof, the flashing is in. It has come in and installation is scheduled for this week, which will complete that project. Exhibit building insulation, uh, project insulation is being installed by our carpenters this week. Superior Court is the same playing, Wishram Park improvements, concrete pad where the swing set used to sit is, is being poured this week. You remember this thing, swing sets pulled out due to comments we received from our insurance providers of, of not meeting current standards or building code. Events, we have quite a few events coming up. We have a baby shower in the exhibit building on November fourth. I was shocked. I guess we'll do anything. Uh, we still have the goat tying clinic on November seventeenth through the nineteenth and the election. Information rally has been moved to the exhibit building. Like we said, they are coming to a walk through this week with the intent to have that on November eighteenth. There's an estate sched- state sale scheduled for Dallesport Community Center on Friday, Saturday and Sunday of this week. Uh, Fuel Island, we continue, uh, radio tower. Um, state has passed, level three testing started on Monday. Level three testing is part of the commissioning, so it's also in progress. One channel is up and running, they're doing what they call burn-in. There is communication between the radio tower and dispatch. So the first channel is up, it's not open to the, to the users yet, but it is up and working. And that's all we have on that. We have one other follow-up issue and that's your thing.
So we have a grader that is going out of its warranty this next month and we're looking to purchase an extended warranty for it. The extended warranty is for an additional two.
Did you get a random phone call in your office? Hey Seth, we've been trying to get ahold of you about your loader's extended warranty.
Uh, this warranty would extend it for two more years. It's full coverage, everything except for wearing parts, which would be like grader bits, hoses, belts, tires, those type of things. It'd cover any other damage or repairs that are needed. Um, the cost is thirty-one thousand dollars. We looked into what it would cost if we had some major damage to that grader and, you know, compare for that cost of extending the warranty. A replacement engine without labor is sixty-two thousand dollars for those graders.
I was agreed.
It's five years old.
How many hours on it?
Ooh, I don't have that with me. I don't remember. Can't remember. And a replacement transmission is forty-four thousand dollars without cost of labor.
Well, I guess as the, probably the only, anything close to expert in the room on extended service contracts, I will say that they are generally a giant waste of money and a ripoff unless you're the strange person that has to have a motor broke and then you really wish you had one. Um, that's a, an automobile. I don't know graders. I don't know how often motors blow up. I don't tend to be an expert on graders. Um, so I'm going to leave that up to you guys on whether you feel more comfortable uh, having an extended service contract on the grader and you feel it'd be a good investment for the county. I'm, I'm fine.
It's through the manufacturer, so if something comes down, uh, Pepe comes in, who is their service, so the John Deere dealer actually is represented. And outside of just the motors and that, you have a lot of electronics that go bad. That's very common. So you end up getting nickels and dimes to death. You end up with them down here anyway to fix it cuz some of the stuff, they just don't give us the ability to do anymore. So we end up with them here anyway. So at least their trip, we're not paying them to come back and, you know, drive to and from Portland. And then at a hundred and eighty or two hundred and twenty, wherever they charge an hour.
Well, that's just it. I, I have no doubt that we'll, if we do this, we'll get back some of our money.
Yes.
Um, but I guess you, you do it the same as you would buy insurance.
Right.
You're not planning on dying next year. You're just getting some coverage just in case.
Has this grader had any major issues warranty wise the first five years? No.
No, they've been good, they've been good running graders.
And how, what is our replacement on it? Are we gonna get through this next warranty and then plan to replace it? Or then we gonna get through this next warranty and then we're gonna have to do the engine after that?
No, they'll continue to issue these things there. And, you know, dude, years ago, or not years ago, but that was always the thing. I agree with Commissioner Christopher. Uh, getting extended warranties was a considerable waste of money, but now you're hearing that's not the story. They're, you know, more of a good purchase, they're saying, because be honest, the stuff isn't as good as it used to be. It's not made as well.
No, and a lot of the issues we have with the new stuff is the regen systems and the DOST and meeting all those requirements and those things are covered under this where, you know, the older machines didn't have that equipment and these are constantly failing, especially on our dump.
So you're saying at the end of two years, they'll just offer you another two-year extension?
Probably.
Interesting. Why wouldn't they offer a four-year, a ten-year, uh, you know, a bigger term upfront? It's usually cheaper if you buy it earlier.
You would think, but that, see, they don't want that. That's, they don't want the cheap.
Yeah, interesting.
But my guess is they'll offer you more. That's typically, I mean, they may not.
Different rate, the next two years.
Well, yeah, I mean, exactly. Exactly, as, as the chances go, but typically, most of our graders, we keep twenty years.
How many do we have extended warranties on all the other graders?
Think we have any on any yet.
We did get them on the Volvos, but we don't use those anymore. So no, this would be the first of our three that will be needing.
Yeah, the Volvos, actually, we used the heck out of those.
Yeah, we used the heck out of those extended warranties on those.
Well, being specialized and having their, their own people service their own product, I think is pretty darn wise. Uh, some people can't work on other people's stuff and you can't get the parts for it. Anything that makes it easier and more affordable when it comes down to have to find those things.
So with the extended warranty, say they can't get parts because of the environment we're in, uh, with that warranty, will they then bring out a loaner for you to use if we're in the middle of something and it's down?
That we have to check into and I've asked the kind of that question too.
I think that would.
You know, if, if there's something, yes, or, you know, you, let's say you blow a motor, do you get a loaner as part of that warranty? That's true, it's a good question. We will research that.
And other than that, um, we hire professionals, uh, and it's your budget and thank you for bringing it to us. But again, like even Commissioner Christopher has worked in that, says he doesn't understand it that much and if. And if you guys think it's a valuable, good, good use of the public resources, then I, I trust.
Thank you.
Everybody likes our graders, they always ask me when you're grading my road.
I think that, that's all we have on the list.
I do not have anything for you, sir. Other than I sent you an email, I don't know if you've seen it.
I briefly saw, I'll respond to you.
Apologize in advance. One of our constituents wants to call and ask our new county engineers questions.
We typically don't answer phone calls, we prefer emails. Cause then we can't get our words twisted.
I'm aware, I'm. Willing to try it one time, so I'm. Trying to facilitate a one-time.
I like emails because I have trouble getting to the phone.
I, I see where you're coming from, it's just to me, you, you lose that personal touch in an email. You have a, more of a tendency to come off gruff or are non-caring. In a written document than you do in a, in a face-to-face or a heart-to-heart, and I don't care whether that's county operations, law enforcement. Uh, or anybody else, so.
I don't disagree with you, I prefer a lot of times to do a phone call, it just depends on the situation.
And that's right, that's me, there's certain people that I will, uh, I, I will talk to everybody and tell you. Take what I said and twist it and misuse it, uh, which happens a lot. Um, and then, yeah, after that, everything's written, so, um, I have evidence of. Even though everything's recorded here too, so, you know, um, yeah, I, I understand where you're. Any other questions for? Our wonderful public work staff. Which, great job, both of you so far, by the way, you're not interim anymore, we're what, ten months in?
We're ten months in.
I am, I personally am very pleased, so I just wanna make that up.
Thank you, we'll be back to see everybody at one thirty, I guess. You had something?
Yeah, I'll do it offline.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, thank you.
Do we have nothing till ten thirty?
Um, I have a, something else that just came through when I got a, a local, uh. Opinion, PA opinion, that I would like to bring up to board.
Uh, in.
Um, I don't know if you want to, no, just regular, I don't know if you wanted to do it now or you wanna do the pay estimate.
I was gonna try to catch him.
Oh.
If not.
Is, I don't know what you're trying to do, go on search or something?
Chair, you're running the meeting.
You wanna do the, the pay estimate and then slotted it after, do you wanna talk about it right now?
Let's do the pass. Uh, we, Mr. Chairman, we have before us the approval of pay estimate number two for the twenty twenty-three annual striping program. In the amount of seventy-six thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the, this project is included on the twenty twenty-three annual maintenance program and road fund budget. Uh, I will note that bids were publicly open January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Stripe right was the lowest responsive bidder. My motion chair is to ex, uh, approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Uh, to pay, pay estimate number two for the annual striping program, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of, uh, paying the bill, say hi.
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 All right, um, childcare centers. Uh, we have the White Salmon Childcare Center, this board seems very open and receptive, uh, of that. Um, so I would like to bring forth the opportunity for this board to facilitate in the same kind of work in Goldendale. For the same kind of funding. Um, I did, uh, this is Learning Ladder Christian, uh, preschool, they operate inside a church. Uh, but I sent a PA opinion request to the prosecutor on whether that is a problem and separation of church and state and whatnot. And they sent back, I guess I would say in a nutshell, which we can forward this to you guys to read as well. That if it is a separate, um.
Company?
Issue or a, a deal operating inside and, and respectfully just renting the church space. Um, then that's not a problem if it's an organization that's actually funded and, and is actually has church, whatever.
Illegation.
Problem, so before I, uh, spend a lot of time, um, going with them and, um, researching this topic. Uh, more and bringing the full Monty back for this board's, um, consideration, I would like. Your opinions on whether you're open to the consideration or not.
I'm, oh, go ahead, Jay.
Is, do we know if this preschool, is it open to only church members or is it open to?
Open to everybody.
It's open to everyone from the public at large.
And they're very much struggling and if they can remain open for the next year. Um, is gonna be hard. So, anything we can do to facilitate. Uh, and, and help them get there, um, I think will be a good thing, but again, I have not. Um, worked on it too much because I didn't wanna get anybody's hopes up. Uh, if they were gonna be dashed, so I wanted to. Um, run the legal opinion first and then run to you guys and see. What the, sorry, how the winds were blowing of the board on the day.
And I think the board, you know, or at least I personally stand one thousand percent for childcare. And I do support, and I've said I support the White Salmon one for all the reasons that I do. My concern is addition to the budget right now. Uh, we had discussions on the White Salmon one because it's been an ongoing budget issue for years and. Uh, it's open and it's functioning, um. So now this would be an additional financial consideration at this time, this wouldn't be, are we preserving what we have? We're gonna add more to our budget, so that would be my only concern with it is.
Well, there's.
Supporting it, but where do we get the money?
I, I would, I guess I would say I would argue, um, there's many ways that you can do it. Um, if your goal is to be fair to the communities as a whole. Um, you can either, uh, figure out where you're gonna fund it on an even keel level. Or you have a certain dollar amount currently, you could take that and split it in half and share it between the communities. Um, or you can tell the Goldendale community, sorry, um, we're spending all the money in White Salmon, those are the choices of the board.
I don't think financially it's rational to say we can split something that's already dedicated to something that's operating.
I don't disagree.
And so if you can prove it to me, you know, find the money, talk to them and go forward, I'd support it a thousand percent. But we need to find a pot of money that's open if, if your idea is coming forward. With the conversations we're gonna have later that we might get extra funding in, put it on that list. If our funding grows this year, put it on that list, it would be a top priority for me. If we have extra funding coming in beyond what we're struggling with right now, because we've already made our twenty-four decisions. Find the money, put it on the list.
It, it's not up to me to find the money, it's up to this board to find the money, I'm just asking if the, um. Well, let's put it this way, I will move forward with the group and then the group will come forward to the board and ask for. Um, the equal number of funding is White Salmon and it'll be up to this board to either fund it or deny it.
You know, since we're in public session, I wanna make it very clear that if someone approaches a, uh. NIT like this and promises something or says we can have it, uh, putting us on the spot to divide something out already that's dedicated doesn't work for me. Uh, again, if you're gonna work with them, be a positive and offer them what you can do, where you can find that funding form. Like you said, there's lots of sources, but help them find that.
Um, I, I'm not proposing taking any funding away from the White Salmon Youth Center. I'm. Um, I find funding pretty constantly in this county. Um, I've done a very good job of finding hundreds of thousands of dollars of funding and savings. Um, and. When I find savings, I get elvoted, so, um, if I, I'm not going to be the one looking for funding. And, um. I will just, um, tell the board if it's, if it's legal. Um, I will notify the group that questioned me on whether they get a share. Um, and, um, they can come forward with a proposal and this board can work together.
And I'm.
To either fund it or not fund it.
And I have a question just for clarification, um, I know you're passionate about your community, Goldendale is your community.
I'm passionate about all communities.
So, did this group come forward to you with this proposal or did you reach out to them?
I've been looking for a childcare option in Goldendale for two and a half years. I've been looking for anybody. Um, that we can use. To facilitate childcare in Goldendale and help childcare in Goldville for two and a half years since I've been in office. Uh, my hope was the new youth facility that's being built over across from McDonald's. Uh, that's kind of up and running now, would, would serve that purpose, but. Um, it is not because it is, uh, religious, um, religiously funded. Um, so no, this is not a new development. Um, this is an old development and I've finally found one. Um, so. I'm bringing it forward because I've finally found one and this board seems very active and very. Engaged and very interested in increasing the childcare options in the county, so I thought, what a better time.
And I think nobody will disagree, we need it for, for the children and for the parents for sure.
Especially, the kicker to me was when they were talking about that they might have to close their doors by the end of the year. Um, because they don't have enough funding to survive in a poor and impoverished area. Um, and so I said, let me check on it, so I did a PA opinion request and that's all the farther that I've gone. So there still needs to be some work to be done, um, and, uh, probably more opinion requests before. We know for sure that it's even an option, um, before they have an ask. Um, I don't wanna do the ask and all that kinda stuff until we're sure one hundred percent that the way they're lined up. Um, works. Um, so, just filling you in that I thought that was actually good news from the PA opinion request. Any? And you haven't weighed in on this issue, I'd give you the opportunity before we move on if you want it.
Um, thank you, I was letting you two work through it. Uh, I have the same, of course, questions that you do, Commissioner Christopher, uh, we need to make sure that we, this is an eligible organization that we give dollars to. So that's the first start, um. It also makes me go back to when, um. There was the whole issue between log app as well as the churches, um, on, um, the food. And I don't recall, do you recall, were we giving money for the food or was that completely separate?
Uh, before my time, I don't, I don't, I, I would hate to get it wrong, so I will.
But, but it definitely comes up and begs the question, but, um, I look forward to the rest of the research you do. And I'd be happy to meet with these people and hear from them and how many, um, P, how many children are actually in childcare? And, and what all they offer in their times and everything, because it's new to me, I've never heard of it, so, thank you.
Um, yep, and it is, for any of those that wanna know, it's literally right, tatty corner right there off of, uh, Columbus and one forty-two. Literally right at those four corners. Um, all right, moving on. Um, we are smidgerly, I don't know if you have everybody ready to go early or not ready to go early.
Be here momentarily.
All right, we'll wait. He's kind of an important guy, we'll give him some time. Now when he gets here, we're gonna pretend like we started without him, but. You have a, a Zoom presentation? Okay, come on forward to this little thing, there should be a computer hookup in the middle of the room if you need it. If not, you can just share your screen. Um, with the Zoom. And we'll get you up and running while we, wait.
Thank you.
And staff was here to help you if you have questions.
Just to print out.
Of the email packet?
Thank you.
So, you say Goldendale, but I heard a bunch of they're all the same.
Yeah. Sounds like a hell of a packet of. Well, I'm not worried about paper, papers change, e- ink, on the other hand, ink is not. I don't even wanna know where you go through an ink for that, holy cow. This case is like thirty-two bucks.
Would mean not.
I mean, those are ink in my little home hobby printer is a hundred bucks, so.
It's not compatible, so if I just join the Zoom and then show my screen without, okay.
Something else?
Yeah.
Very started without you, Bob, we were gonna wait, but Tim said you weren't important enough to wait for, so.
Yeah, I'll grab a chair.
Yeah, feel free to slide as many chairs over there as you need. Becky's still on? That he is still on? We are ready when you are, so for the general public out there listening. Uh, the next item we have is a department presentation by the Sheriff Department. It is undersherman, undersheriff Carmen Note and the Flock Camera Presentation, so, all yours.
Morning, so I've been meeting with, um. Block representatives, I have Mike Gibbons here and Kristen and McCloud. Um, she flew in from Boise today, we've been working together for months and months on. Understanding what flock cameras do and what they can help us with, with technology regarding the crime in Clicktack County. Um, we all know that we have criminal activity on each in. Of the county and all parts in between, and we have a limited amount of deputies. So using technology to assist in any kind of criminal activities and cases will be most beneficial and far more economical. Um, than trying to hire additional deputies that we know we can't get right now with our current budget situation. So we're hoping that we can move forward and, and purchase the, you, uh, some of these cameras to use. Especially in our high criminal activity areas. I will let these guys take over because they are truly the experts in this, I'm still learning.
Real quick, by way of introduction, my name's Mike Gibbons, I live over in White Salmon, so I'm right by Columbia High School, um, just happens to be a. Happy coincidence that I also work for Flock, so I'm here to support the county and the various agencies throughout the county.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Kristen McCloud and I am a community engagement manager with Flock Safety. And my role really is to provide education and information to, um, city and county leadership. As well as community members about Flock Safety and what it does and doesn't do. So we have a quick presentation to share with you this morning. Um, thank you, undersheriff, for that great introduction and kind of the why behind the department, the agency seeking out the technology. Lock's mission is very simple, it's to. Flock's mission is very simple. It's to eliminate crime and to shape a safer future together.
That's a big goal. Eliminate crime.
Eliminate crime. That's.
Good luck with that goal.
We're, we're working towards it for sure. So why Flock Safety? I wanted to share a little bit about the company in the background. Our founder Garrett Langley um created Flock Safety five years ago and it was after his neighborhood and um his family were victims of crimes, um mainly property crimes. And he went to law enforcement and was frustrated and wanted to know, you know, why his uh doorbell technology footage wasn't usable and law enforcement apologetically, you know, said what would really be helpful is if we had a vehicle description and a license plate number and Garrett asked for why. And he learned that over seventy percent of crimes are committed in conjunction with a vehicle. And so it got him thinking and engineer by trade. And he started to research license plate recognition technology and he found three things. Um, one, that the technology had been around for quite some time since the nineteen seventies. It's used on toll bridges that you all have here. Um, and two, that the companies that provided the technology, technology was really expensive and it rendered it inaccessible to many communities. And three, that the legacy uh technology companies would often sell data to third parties. So he wanted to create a company that was really built around ethics, around safeguarding privacy and that addressed those three things, making it efficient, accessible, and again ethical. What we currently observe and what undersheriff had mentioned is that police resources are really stretched thin. And crime occurs daily, hourly, um and trust is needed more than ever in law enforcement. Flock really believes that we have the opportunity to multiply your force, to provide a really effective tool to get objective evidence into the hands of law enforcement professionals. So how does this technology work? This image right here of the rear of a vehicle, that is what the ALPR camera takes when it is when a car passes by, it is motion activated and it takes a photo of the rear of the vehicle. And what we all can see here, that back of the vehicle, we can see the make, model, color. We can see that it looks like there's window tinting. We can also see the license plate, the number. And the state, yes.
I'm very confused because that picture is from about person heights of somebody standing in the middle of the road. So, uh, I'm assuming your camera is going to be off to the side of the road and have a sideways or is it overhead coming down?
You want to.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. So it's it's off to the side of the road. Depends on the right of way. Usually it's about ten to twelve feet in the air. It'll be pointed oriented down.
To the side and a little.
That's correct. This is a little zoomed in and I think um it's more more to illustrate the vehicle fingerprint technology.
Got it.
But if we were to look at entry into Goldendale right there, um inbound, I would put it about six feet off the road on the other side of that sidewalk. About ten to twelve feet up and then oriented with the direction of travel.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that question. Um, so what we can see is what the camera takes of that back of that vehicle. And Flock Safety, it's a subscription model. So when you're um when the agency signs on, they're signing on to um, you get full service with us. It's maintenance of the cameras. It's um if there is an upgrade to the technology and improvement, that is included as long as you're under contract with us. Um, so the cameras, the platform at which law enforcement will access the information, all of that is included. And that really enables the jurisdiction to focus on doing your business and let us take care of maintaining and upgrading the technology. So this is license plate recognition. It gathers that objective evidence to solve crimes. This is not facial recognition. It is not tied to personal identifiable information. And the data is not stored beyond thirty days. At a thirty day mark of that image being taken, it is completely wiped from the system. So how does the technology prevent and eliminate crime? It's proactive when a wanted vehicle passes by one of our cameras. Law enforcement gets an alert within twenty seconds and will provide that information to law enforcement as to where that vehicle's located.
Who gets the alert?
Law enforcement.
Dispatch or you personally or?
Depends on how we set it up.
Okay, so somebody.
Correct. It could, uh, the alert could go to all the deputies. Um, since we don't know, you know, you don't know what time of day, we'd have to go out to all of the deputies. But it could also just go out to dispatch too. We haven't gone through all that final decision-making process yet of who will receive the alert.
Yeah, I can take that as well, Chairman. Um, so that's, that's designed by the agency with our guidance. So it depends to pe- uh each agency, which is going to work best for them. So when we look at Clickitack County, who do we want the alerts going to? It could be just dispatch. It could be every officer out in the field or deputy out in the field. It could be patrol sergeants. That's going to vary depending on need. We can even subdivide that by geography. So if we have someone that's in the eastern part of the county or the western part of the county, they wouldn't get alerts for the eastern part of the county or vice versa.
That's what I'm thinking. The, the sergeants or the people on shift in that part of the county might work because I'm, I'm sitting here going, oh my God, if we add two thousand more pings to dispatch.
We're, we're actually talking to Clark County about that right now because they get so many different pings to dispatch. We need to filter it out. So it's, hey, if there's maybe if there's a felonious warrant that comes in, that goes straight to dispatch. But if it's something like a stolen plate or what have you, that might go to a patrol sergeant. That just depends on each individual agency and what works best for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So it's investigative and it also serves as a deterrent. When you enter in with Flock Safety, you're joining a network of several other agencies that are currently utilizing Flock Cameras. So how do we mitigate risk and protect your constituents' privacy? The footage is owned by the agency or city and will never be sold or shared by Flock. We have our, again, the thirty day data retention and then it's deleted. All data is stored securely in the AWS cloud and it's encrypted end to end. A search reason is required for that audit trail. So when law enforcement is accessing the still images, they need to enter in a case number or some sort of um agency identifier that is um associated. So that way the department can audit and they can ensure that the information is being accessed according to their policy. And it is not used for traffic enforcement. This is our transparency and insights portal. This is unique to Flock. This is an optional page for departments to utilize to, it's a public facing page. And it really shares information and it's customizable for each agency. But it can share information with the public such as the department's ALPR policy. It can also share um who the other agencies that the department is sharing the Flock information with. And then the insights dashboard is really important. That is, can be utilized by administration to really take a look at that return on investment. Is the product being used? Um, what sort of impact is that having? So I mentioned that uh Flock Safety really when you um have our technology, you're joining that a network of safety. So these are all of the agencies that currently utilize our technology within the state of Washington. And I'd like to share a few stories, just kind of demonstrating the impact that the technology can have. This was it out of Tech Willow, Washington. Officers received an alert that a stolen vehicle was in the area and they located that vehicle as they approached another vehicle in a separate stolen vehicle um entered that area and attempted to flee. Uh, they pursued that. It was recovered a short time later. When they went back to their original traffic stop, they actually found the suspect in possession of methamphetamine and fentanyl and were able to execute an arrest there. And then later that same day, a third hit from the cameras led them back to that same parking lot where they were able to recover a third stolen vehicle. Here are some statistics from Yakima PD. This was in a nine-month span and these are kind of the numbers that they received and a statement from uh Chief Murray out of Yakima um that he believes that Flock is really their number one intelligence sharing tool. This is a headline that made national news and I like to share it because it demonstrates um the proactive uh benefit of utilizing the technology. This was a attempted smash and grab burglary at a jewelry store. And there were five suspects and the owner of the jewelry store chased them off. The owner was able to provide law enforcement with a vehicle description and they entered in that information into the Flock system and they created a, an alert, a custom alert. Law enforcement feared that the suspects would return and escalate the level of violence used in order to finish the job. And unfortunately, or fortunately, they were right. But they received an alert that the suspect vehicle was back in the area and they were able to stop that vehicle and um make an arrest, very likely preventing um further further violence with the jewelry store owner. And then lastly, this is a case study out of Shambly, Georgia. And this is a stranger on stranger abduction story, which is extremely rare. Um, this mom was taking her baby out for a walk in a stroller and was uh approached by two armed masked individuals and after a struggle, those uh individuals took the baby from mom and fled. Mom uh distraught. She did not get a license plate number, but she was able to provide the vehicle information to law enforcement and they set an alert. Across state lines, um a few hours later, an alert uh was received by an agency also utilizing Flock and they were able to um locate that suspect vehicle. They initiated a felony stop and were able to do that very uh tactically sound and safe. And they were able to um place those subjects under arrest and return the baby safely to mom within uh a few hours. And with these types of cases, time is absolutely critical to get location information to law enforcement and Flock help do just that. And then um Flock is really, really helpful and impactful. Uh, we have hundreds of stories of alerts from uh missing vulnerable persons, so silver alerts, people suffering from Alzheimer's and dementia. Um, family can provide that information to law enforcement and alerts can be created there. So I will pass it back to undersheriff if she has anything else to add. Um, and so turn it back to helpful questions.
I don't have anything else to add, but I'm hoping you have lots of questions.
So is the goal of this, I guess, sorry, I'll go first. Uh, is the goal of this to run a trial and they're going to provide you with X number of cameras for X number of days, weeks, months, years? Preferably years. And then collect said data and come forward to the commissioners with your data and price quotes on what you would like to do. Is that the approach going forward?
Yes, that's correct, sir. So that's a unique situation for Clickitack County where we're doing what's called a PPI or Project Prove It, as we call it internally, where we would put the cameras in the ground in Clickitack County, some cameras. Um, and Flock will assume the financial liability. So should we end the end of this pilot? And the county says, hey, we don't want the cameras. They didn't justify their own existence. That's still financially on Flock to remove the cameras. So should that be the wishes of the county and the agencies, we would absolutely abide by that.
Make sure you talk to Public Works to get a franchise agreement. Um, putting something in the road right away. Um, sorry, just.
No, that's fine.
Are you looking to put them only along county roads or also state highways?
Currently, it's just county right away. Um, so for the purposes of the project prove it, when we look at wash dot O dot Idaho Department of Transportation, what have you, the permitting process is usually very long. So I would hate to have the project start, have something on state right away and then you end up down a camera for months.
For their franchise agreement.
Exactly. So I'm trying, but right now even Flock can't make wash dot do what we want them to do, so.
I would say I look forward to, I'm a numbers guy. Um, I don't like to make decisions until I have all the evidence in front of me and I can crunch numbers and I can I can see a bang for a buck. Um, so as you were going through, I was looking at the the data you were got here in your pings. And I was making little notes of what I look forward to seeing. Um, is the number of flock hits that ended up getting cited by a law enforcement officer and or arrested by a law enforcement officer. To me, if there was, you know, three hundred hits because they were driving Yakima and we never got them. There's not a bang for the buck. I want to see him housed in the Clickitack County bed and breakfast. Um, so how many are cited and how many arrested? Um, how many out of county warrants did we get out of that? Because that's kind of one for me because we're housing them until they're extradited out. Um, and then I'll divide that by how many cameras you have and and figure out my math, but those were the, the big three numbers I would like to see from your data.
I think it's also important to note that we can also track some. So if we had the three hundred hits that went through of ninety-seven, that we could alert Yakima because they're very active participants in Flock Camera. And if they're aware that that, that person is coming up and they get to their county, then they could make an arrest. So I think there'll be some, some ways to utilize some inter-agency uh networking. Because we also have counties to the east that have these cameras and so it will be give us a full network, which will be extremely useful. We know the criminals don't just stay inside county lines and we know the east side of the county is getting hit.
I, I would even say that if, if you got the ping for a bad guy on ninety-seven and you couldn't get him and you forwarded Yakima, they made the arrest. Give me that number because I'm going to credit that with.
Okay.
We took a bad guy off the street.
Right.
Next time on his return trip through Clickitack County, could have robbed or murdered somebody. So I, I just need to see that.
Absolutely. And I think that's.
It won't be on the state roads. You know, when I keep thinking about this, I'm like, oh, it makes all sense in the world on the state roads. But on county roads, you're not going to see the same number of transiting through.
So we have actually an opportunity to I believe target highway ninety-seven without going out onto a state right away. There happens to be the Collins Street Overpass that looks down right onto ninety-seven. It's a perfect opportunity to put a camera on. So I think we have to get creative.
I do, but I would also tell you to double check with the state because they
Absolutely.
They set boundaries for things that are on private property fifty yards back in the field, so.
But it, you know, if we can get creative that way, you know, we'll.
Get creative as you can without us getting sued. That would be great.
Absolutely.
Or burning. Because I agree with it.
Right.
So, so the state of Washington has not been a flock user, is that what?
So the state of Washington or, you know, WSP uses Flock through various agencies currently. So when you look at, they have what's called a memorandum of understanding where they can utilize the information that's coming in through all those agencies you saw as well as private property. So we have, you know, their Mercer Ranch, for instance, that's here in the county, already owns Flock Cameras. So those are accessible to a lot of different agencies. Again, important tidbit here, and I know this has been of interest as we're talking about this through the county. The data is owned by the camera owners. So Mercer Ranch owns their data. They choose to share with Clickitack County. Clickitack County would own their data. You get to choose to share with whoever else you want to share with. Um, so there's, there's a lot of differentiating between data ownership and data custody. And I want to be clear about that. We're a data custodian, but we can't do anything with the data that Clickitack County doesn't approve us to do.
So if we're getting cameras for twenty-five hundred bucks, are we buying these or are these your cameras that were so when it gets hit with a, a random rock flying off a car, who pays for the new camera?
So depending on how the camera goes down, it's a great example. Yakima had one that went down to a snowplow earlier this year. So a snowplow kicked some snow off the road, took out one of the cameras, Flock replaced it. So that's how that worked. Um, you know, in a case of like vandalism or theft, we'd have to look at it. Usually the camera can be recovered. We had a genius um about six months ago that backed up to a license plate reader camera. I'll say that again, backed up to a license plate reader camera. Cut the camera off. As soon as you turn it sideways, the camera panics and it's got a geolocator in it. So it says, hey, something's wrong with me. Were you able to recover that camera? Still chose to replace it just in case anything was wrong with it. The cameras, also to answer your question, Chairman, the cameras are leased to the county. Um, and that's how we roll all the maintenance, everything else into it. The other thing that's nice about that is it's on an upgrade schedule. So as we upgrade cameras, they'll be upgraded every time. I used to work for the government and I would buy these fancy toys and then the end result was I had a warehouse of fancy toys that didn't work. That's one of the ways.
And we are well aware of most of the people that stay in our bed and breakfast are not the sharpest knives in the drawer, so.
Interesting things happen.
The data, or do you have a question? Go ahead.
I'm looking at your list of who you work with and I see they're primarily police departments. Is there in rural counties, is there less of a cost benefit analysis or what's going on with the rural areas? Because you could get a ping, but your nearest deputy might be an hour away. And so, so can you talk to me a little bit about that and how that helps?
Yeah, I would say as we look at the list in Washington, I was brought on in March to help beef up our presence in the Pacific Northwest. So that's Flock originated in Georgia. Our company is about six years old. They, like a lot of East Coast companies, they spread up the eastern seaboard and then they went to California. So now we're growing in the Pacific Northwest. But if we look at rural and what we've done rurally in Texas, we have a similar situation where there are counties that are massive and ClickItAt, no matter where you're at in the country, is a massive county, nineteen hundred square miles. It's huge. And the biggest thing there, and I think it's important because it comes up in this email that you were kind enough to share, is when we look at proactive enforcement. So this email that a citizen sent in, I'm going to share a little bit about it, said, how does this work proactively in terms of, and they mentioned a stolen plate. In rural counties and right now, if someone comes in who has an active warrant, they could be an NCIC. Or if you have an Amber Alert that's in NCMCC, which is what we call Amber Alert, or it's a stolen plate. We're relying on an officer being in the right place at the right time. That's our hope and prayer to keep our community safe. If we've got a camera that can catch them coming into the county, we now know that an active warrant just entered ClickItAt County. We now know that an individual with a stolen plate just entered ClickItAt County. So we can act in a, in a proactive manner, both from, hey, this individual's here, where do we have officers? Because like you said, you need to call for service and click it that you could be sixty, seventy miles away. And that's tough. The other, the other thing about that too is that I want to discuss officer safety. We have precious few officers out here. And when they respond to something, they don't always know what they're getting into. One of the things I like about the Flock program is you can see what you're responding to. If someone has an active warrant for something incredibly violent, it is a completely different situation than a stolen plate or something like that, could be, right? So we can be proactive in that sense as well. But what it's doing is taking that geography, slicing it up into these little pieces where we can say someone is here and we can respond, or someone is here and we can respond. Hopefully that answers your question, sir.
Right. But as I designed it in my head, I'm like, that makes complete sense if we can put it on all the state routes.
So wash dot is not off the table. I don't want to say that the state routes are off the table. Just for Project Prove It, I would want to focus on things we can do now. As time goes on, we have, you know, we have cameras that are on state right away in Washington. It just takes a few months. So Yakima has plenty of them on state right away. Centrale actually managed to get quite a few just right there along I five. So it's not something that is off the table. It's just, I just want to be clear that it takes a few months. We're looking at this, you know, set the expectation appropriately, what I can do and what I can't.
I think it's important to remember too that if we suspect any sex offenders, being in our school zones, we could use the Flock camera system to verify that person is is or is not in a school zone. Columbia High School happens to fall on a county road. So that might be an ideal location for using the Flock during this pilot program to see what kind of traffic we have going by the school zone where we know we have hundreds of kids out every day walking or driving back and forth through school. So I think we have we're pretty fortunate. Mike and his team have developed a strategic plan mapping of where cameras would be very useful into ClickTack County. And of course, those not necessarily for the pilot program right now, but they're all the choke points into the county, you know, east and west entries, north, south entries at bridges and out one forty two, places where we know when you're trying to run from the law and they're, they head down Broadway and then they jump down through Glenwood or they hit the Y and they go down through ClickTack. We have cameras at those strategic locations and we can get alerts on them and that will make some difference also.
So how many cameras would be included in the PPI?
I think five.
I think we have five or six right now for the first phase. You know, to be clear, we map quite a few. So if I share the map with you, you'll see somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty seven. The intent is that's a five year program. That's what we look at over time. Right now in the initial phase, it's five or six. And that's the reason we do that is because sometimes grant money becomes available, things like that. And whatever agency has that mapped and can be first up usually gets the funding. So we like to give
Your thirty six mapped, you're ideally putting five or six probably in those key locations that you think is going to be the most the most pinged.
Big that to hit all the major arterial routes is a large number of cameras. So.
That was one.
And we are going to be looking for grant money and hopefully you guys have some resources and it may be our risk pool. Who knows? You know, there's grant money through all sorts of different agencies and hopefully we can all work together and find some grant money. Even if we had just
Department of Justice has a lot.
Right. You know, and at the end, if we only have two cameras to start with or one camera, I mean, it's better than zero.
I'm trying to go through the questions asked in this email by a citizen. I agree, I do understand, but how long the video is kept? You said thirty days. What crimes are you intending to capture? It sounds like all. Will things like parking violations and tickets be used? Camera footage? Sounds like no. Why are you choosing Lyle and not White Salmon? For instance, it sounds like you're choosing all. And you're not signaling it out to Lyle. That's what they had. So I just wanted to make sure I
Right. And I think the one reason we we've done two presentations in Lyle because we know that there was a lot of criminal activity in Lyle. But we also know the one forty two and fourteen intersect and that would be a normal placement for a camera or somewhere upstream on one forty two.
Are you meeting with homeowners associations like Pine Forest and whatnot to see if they wanted to throw a camera they were paying for out of their homeowners association on each side?
I have not reached out that far yet.
We've talked to a couple of neighborhood watch programs and mentioned it to them.
Is I, I'm
What about the cities?
I, I think it can be useful, but I think in those tight confined areas like a HOA type thing or in a city, it's even more useful.
So City of Goldendale were very receptive and because they understand the criminal activity going around in their city as well. And they actually asked if it would be something we could work together on. So maybe they're, they would partner and that might be beneficial too. Benjen, they had a lot of questions. I they're not a hard no, but we'll see where they go. White Salmon was a hard no. They didn't want to have a presentation or anything. They just said it wasn't in their budget, which I understand given the the current budget situations across the county.
Really quickly, I wanted to address a couple of things here. There's no video. We don't record video. There are high fidelity images. There'll just be a string of high fidelity images. So no one's going to be actively monitoring that, so to speak. It'll go through alerts, things like that. Even a small deployment like this is going to generate tens of thousands of images a week. So when we look at feasibility of going through images without knowing what you're looking for, it's just not, there's not enough hours in the day. That's an important tidbit here. I see surveillance. There's one camera going into Lyle. So it'd be, you know, kind of ingress, I think, or egress for Lyle. So I, I think that falls far short of the dictionary definition of surveillance. Just want to be clear about that too, because if people are expecting surveillance from us, that's not the business we're in. It's high fidelity image capture on these public right aways to make sure that if someone were to enter a community or leave a community with the intent to commit a crime or after committing a crime or with an active warrant, we're catching that.
One of the ones I've heard from the public is we all know how good the, some of our federal ABC organizations are at hacking other countries, looking through your cell phone cameras and everything else. So they're worried that they can't get into your stuff to see what's on that camera without you knowing about it, without us knowing about it. Now, could they? I would say, hell yeah, they can. But what are they going to get a license plate?
I think
So I, I but that, that concern is out there. I hear it quite a bit.
And it's a good concern. And to your point, even a company like Flock with, I think we're up past sixty thousand cameras, the various agencies we work with, none of them being federal. I want to be clear about that. We don't work with immigration enforcement. We don't work with the federal organizations right now. We were not impervious. So that's, I think it's irresponsible to say that we're ironclad.
Right.
Has it ever happened? No. Do I foresee it happening in the future? No. But I'm not going to stand here and and say that.
And if you're not taking streaming video, what is there to see?
The other thing is the value of Flock isn't even really the images. As valuable as the images are, the value of Flock is the machine learning entity that goes through the images to say, you're looking for, I drive a gray forerunner. You're looking for a gray forerunner with a sticker in the back window. We can find you that gray forerunner with a sticker in the back window.
Oh, so it's not even just license plate. It's
The vehicle fingerprint. So if I take off my license plate and I decide to become a nefarious individual, which won't happen.
Or putting a legal license plate on and
Or put illegal license plate. Or if I switch license plates, let's say, you know, gray forerunner commits a crime, swaps license plates. We're not just looking for license plate. We can find that gray forerunner with, right now I have a mountain bike rack on the back. So mountain bike rack, window sticker. You can put that in and you can find me, whether I took my license plate off or I switched my license plate. But again, you're going through tens of thousands of images looking for something specific, which is the value of the tool, is when you're looking for something specific. If you're trying to filter through all that data, as a company, we process ten billion images a week. So more than Instagram. So getting access to that data isn't valuable. The machine learning entity that we own is, and that is proprietary. Hopefully that helps. And I'm, again, I'm here in the county. I'm happy to answer questions if folks have.
Oh, I guess with that, talking about the sharing and, and so how many of your police departments or counties share data with WSP or with federal entities? How many of those share up or the private share up?
None share with federal right now. So none of them share with federal entities right now. Usually that's a request of their citizenry, but it was also mandated by, I think, the California agencies initially.
So each department has control over who they're going to choose to share their data with. There's State Law in California where they just share within California. So again, it would be really up to each department to figure out who they want to share that information, which law enforcement agency that they would want to share that information.
Right. And then with WSP, I think almost all of them will share in some capacity with WSP. But a lot of times it's we look at Axon is what's being used. So the main source of truth for law enforcement right now for most agencies in the Pacific Northwest is Axon's evidence.com. We integrate with evidence.com. It's far more likely that they're adding to case files and evidence.com than sharing, you know, just Flock in general, people that don't have it.
So we get a lot of questions coming to the commissioners and I know, I think you guys have a Facebook. And some of the comments we received are, we aren't able to make it to nighttime meetings or daytime meetings because we're working. And I think at a meeting before I attended, you gave their website to check it out. Could you possibly post something so we can direct people to your Facebook saying, here's what we're doing?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Because I, I want to be, I think it's important that the public knows that we're, we're being very transparent in this whole process. We want people to understand. We are an agency that is a limited budget. We have an agency with limited resources of deputies. Nineteen hundred my square miles patrol on every shift with only three deputies is a lot to ask. And I provided a report in our update. We're averaging twenty calls every twenty four hours, twenty to forty five calls every day for the first twenty four days of October. That's a lot of calls. There's seven hundred and forty one calls that just the deputies responded to.
Right. And that was my worry. If you're going to try to funnel all these pings through dispatch
Right.
without filtering them out and in doing it on your end, I'm afraid it's gonna
And we don't know how many
Load them and they're already overloaded.
Right. We're not sure how many pings, you know, we'll get, right? I don't we just don't know because we don't have any data to compare to yet for us.
Are you going to set up like a specific parameters or is this going to be an on the go? They're going to call and say, hey, yeah, we're getting way too many pings for this little menial thing. Take that off the ping list. Kind of scenario and you can adapt it as we go.
Yeah. So that's a great question. It's a best practice. So it evolves as it goes. In the beginning, we might choose to open it up to say, hey, anything and everything of interest, let's have it ping and that's going to become annoying very fast. Having, having been, you know, attached to the program.
You can set up different pings in different areas because certain things might be important to watch for in a school zone. While not necessarily an important to watch for in the middle of some community where a sex offender can be. So don't ping me a sex offender in the middle of Lyle unless they're next to the Lyle school.
Correct.
Scenario.
Yep. I mean, I think the best, best example of that is the state of Georgia issues an active warrant for anyone with a parking ticket. So one of the first things we do is automatically filter that out because there's a lot of parking tickets.
Good, because I don't need to know about warrants in Georgia.
And I have to say that since being part of joining this whole educational process of Flock, agencies across the state of Washington have shared let, let me access their data, although I haven't had the opportunity to access a whole lot of it. It was very nice that they were, they were ready to share information because we share the same criminals within a few counties around us. So that was kind of nice. I think it will also allow us to engage more with the other agencies and maybe cut down on the criminal activity in their counties as well.
Well, I, and that's kind of where I'm coming from with the data. I, I'm sure it's pretty obvious to everybody that pays attention that I'm a a supporter of law enforcement and I want to be able to give you the tools that, the first tool is keep you all safe and get you home at night. The second tool is anything I can do to help you do your job better. But for the taxpayers, I have the budget. So show me the number so I can justify it there. In what you're getting in arrests and whatnot so that I can make the math. Pencil. And I, and I think we're, we're good.
Thank you.
I guess, so that'll be an interesting thing with regards to the numbers and I, and I totally am in agreement with Commissioner Christopher that it's the numbers. Because if you only have three deputies on, your three deputies are always on, working on something. And so are we going to be getting a bunch of pings for missing plates that they're like, yeah, I wish I had time for that?
Right.
And so the question is, is how is this actually going to be a full multiplier or is it just going to be like, wow, we've got a lot of people with stolen plates and warrants that are running around that we can't even go track down.
Right.
Too bad you can't get a ping for people who live here with the Oregon plates because that's a tax benefit.
Yeah, thank you. I went through Benjen the other day.
He's probably got an Oregon plate on the back of that.
I went through Benjen and on one street, I think I seen five cars with Oregon plates at residences. So, yeah.
It's, it's a huge revenue for us. So, yeah. Anyway, sorry, threw that out.
What he's asking is, can you add that?
Watch the sheriff's revenue just skyrocket.
I do think you brought up an important point about the stolen plates and, and active warrants and things we have time to respond to or not respond to. If we do have time to respond, great. If we don't, we know someone was stolen plates or something to that effect. It's probably a nefarious individual. If they do something, we can go back and say, where is this pattern of life? I use an example in, in Yakima recently, we had, there was a child abduction. So that happened and, and they got probable cause to go through and look and, and make an arrest. But when they looked at the pattern of life, they found this individual had been circling around every elementary school every day in Yakima. And so when they were able to make the stop, they knew approximately where this person was going to be. That's another thing where, and when we look back through the historical data, we can see if we do have a warrant for this person or if we are looking for this person, how can we engage them safely? Instead of giving them the opportunity to rip a hundred miles an hour down fourteen. So there's a practical application for that as well.
Any other questions from my seatmates on this issue?
Well, I guess, you know, this is in another elected department and considering it'll have no budget impact, you guys don't have to, in, in my understanding, come to us to ask to, to set it up for this. The question then becomes, you know, it only hits us when you're asking for a budget impact on the twenty twenty four budget.
Right.
And we just finished the budget process and there wasn't included. So that would be, you know, having to do a budget amendments or and what is, I, I don't even know how much are the, each camera a year?
The cameras are three thousand dollars a year per camera. Yes, sir. The cameras are three thousand dollars a year per camera. Yes, sir. Okay.
That's where I saw there were twenty-five hundred. Maybe we can negotiate. Oh, they heard me. Sorry.
We'll let the cities do that for us. Your, your goal was thirty-six or thirty-two?
That depends on what's best for the county. Honestly, we're like, um,
We haven't made it.
To the chairman's point. My advocacy is always, when you start like this, look at the data. And that'll tell us not just if more cameras are applicable, usually they are, but which cameras are applicable. Cause as we evolve, we're gonna say, hey, this camera's getting a lot of really good hits. This one isn't. Maybe it needs to be moved instead of just adding another one. Um, there's a lot of strategy that goes into these deployments. So I can save X number of cameras now. It may end up being less, depending on what we find, may end up being more.
Is there any early termination type of stuff? We leased it for the year. We don't want this camera anymore. It doesn't work in this area. Send it back. Uh, now we're going down to thirty-three. Are we stuck at thirty-five? We gotta go stick it in some other place? Or can we adapt this year over year based on what we're seeing and using?
So you can do year over year. So it'll be an agreement for the number of cameras for that year.
Correct. Okay.
If you were to ratchet it down the next year, fine. If you want to relocate one, fine. It'll be, if it's thirty-three, it's thirty-three. But this initial pilot program is not a year.
And then is the, is there setup or say you're gonna move it from one place to another? Is that direct charge on top of it or is three-year flat per camera?
So there is an implementation fee. It depends on where the camera is. E- existing infrastructure is a lot cheaper. If we put in a pole that costs more, it just really depends on where that camera is. If we have to relocate a camera, that's a case by case basis. So I'd, you know, we'd have to know where it's going. I couldn't give you a hard number because if we take something from existing infrastructure and then have to put it, you know, put a pole in or a, a larger pole or more robust one, it could be different than existing infrastructure to existing infrastructure. What I can say is I'll work with the sheriff's department as much as I can.
So can you give us, uh, say you, you're putting in a, a pole and you're, you're in the middle of the north. There's no power. There's no, you know, putting the pole in, setting it up alongside the road. How much is that implementation fee usually?
Six hundred and fifty dollars. And they come with solar. They come, um, so it's solar and the solar works in the Northwest. They work in Astoria, Oregon. That's an important point and distinction up here. They do work in the Northwest. If they work in Astoria, they work anywhere. So it's solar powered. They work off LTE. I've driven around the county. I haven't seen a drop in LTE that's significant that would prohibit camera placement. Um, so there's nothing that I've seen that's an issue.
Not a Glenwood.
Yeah.
Might have to check that out. Um, but then, you know, I'll give you a K, a situation. Medford recently had a camera that was sitting at twenty-eight percent battery. We couldn't figure out why. So it's just always at twenty-eight percent. It's functional at twenty-eight percent, but we didn't want it to go down. So we replaced it. That didn't cost Medford anything.
From the tree that's overhanging the, the solar panel. Uh, all right, we, um, we went a little long and we're digging into our fine sheriff's time. So I would ask my seatmates if they have any final questions.
No.
To ask. If not, thank you all for the presentation. Um, I'm assuming you're gonna keep the board updated on when this pilot program is going in and all that good stuff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Thank you all for the presentation. I learned something.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, commissioner. Pleasure to meet you.
This latest email we got asking all sorts of questions on this. What petty crimes are, I would suggest one of us or the clerk just has this person, um, ask these questions to the sheriff's office because I don't, I don't really.
I sent an email back, um, letting him know what time that was so that their questions could be answered. Um, and if so, then talk to the sheriff. They didn't get it.
It's, they wanted to know what are the five most common crimes and it's like, I, I don't know the answer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna have to buy you guys a bigger printer over there. Did I miss one?
Oh, my goodness.
That's awesome. I might have spent some money at the Posse Scout fundraiser. I did miss two of the sugary items, but one of them was gluten-free, so I intentionally didn't put on it. All the rest of the sugary items I won. Thank you very much.
All of them?
Yes.
Um, maybe. Confirm or deny.
Files are sealed. I'm.
I know, obviously.
He just wanted to make sure it wasn't a public gift. He actually paid for it.
Yes.
How am I gonna do this? Yeah, those, that was the item you purchased at our silent auctions.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. They are very delicious caramels.
I know the packet is big.
I may have to cut out early for an appointment.
You do you, sir.
Uh, anyway, good afternoon or good morning, I guess it is. And there, and we'll explain the difference in the call load. Uh, my number one item, there were a total of ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine calls for service from January one to October twenty-three of this year. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one civil papers during the same time period. And so to talk earlier about how busy the deputies are, they're extremely busy. On September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM, we held a Posse Scout meeting at the community uh, building in, uh, the, the Dellsport. At this meeting, Under Sheriff Carmen Knops provided training to the Posse Scout members. We also worked on the upcoming fundraiser for the Posse Scouts input. Posse with, which the Posse Scouts had input. The fundraiser was set for October twenty-first, uh, tw- twenty-twenty-three at five PM located at the American Legion. On October seventh at twelve PM, two PM, different item. We held the Faith and Blue Community Event on the front lawn of the courthouse. This event was attended by various faith groups, church members, law enforcement members and public at large. Washington State Patrol Sergeant Nate Hovinghoff organized the event, which involved members of the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office and the Gold, Golden Dale Police Department. The sheriff's Posse Scouts helped set up tables, chairs for the event in addition to help serving hamburgers and hot dogs. Uh, and dessert, by the way. There were approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred people that attended the event. It was a great success. On October twenty-first, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, at five PM, we held the Sheriff's Posse fundraiser at the American Legion in Golden Dale. We had numerous items for the silent auction. The fundraiser was attended by community members. A group photo was taken of the Posse Scouts and they helped it with the auction. Under Sheriff Knops and Chief, uh, Civil Deputy Engles, Engles. Sorry. Uh, played a major role in organizing the fundraiser. Uh, and I'll leave it up to these two ladies to comment on the Posse Scout program, but I want to thank you, uh, Commissioner, um, Christopher Herman for being there and taking part in the program. It's appreciated. But I, I think it was highly successful. Uh, Carrie can get into the numbers or whatever, but, uh, it was just a very good feeling to have the young people taking part in law enforcement and, uh, along with their parents, I might have. It was a good deal. So at this point, if it's okay with the board, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, the undersheriff.
Good morning. So we have been pretty busy. Um, when Bob does his calls of service, that's all calls that come into dispatch and that's for all the, within the city agencies as well. What I'm referring to, um, in the beginning of my report is only incidents assigned to Clicktack County Sheriff's deputies. So the Clicktack County Sheriff's Office has responded to seven hundred and forty-one incidents in Clicktack County from October first through October twenty-fourth. So I took that final number this morning when I come in. The report is attached and you will see that the deputies have responded to calls ranging from animal noise to weapons offenses. And this report shows only calls that are assigned to the sheriff's office and is not the total number of calls received to dispatch. Those fun, those numbers are of course far higher. As the sheriff mentioned, Clicktack County Sheriff's Office, Washington State Patrol and the Golden Dale Police Department participated in the Faith and Blue Community Event held on the courthouse lawn. It was extremely warm that day and we were very, I'm gonna just kind of go off key here. We were very blessed to have the weather because it really drew out a large crowd to the, uh, courthouse lawn. I will say that we had a lot of backlash, um, on Facebook about joining the Faith and Blue, how we were crossing over between church and state. It was very unfortunate. It was a community-minded event. There was, um, people saying that taxpayer dollars should not be used to pay for the barbecue. I can assure you that no taxpayer dollars were used. All of the money that was used to purchase the food items and everything part of that event come out of the pockets of all the law enforcement agencies involved. It did not come from taxpayer dollars. It did not come out of our budget. We were, had such a really good positive feedback after the event, especially from those that attended. That we will be expanding those next year and hopefully we'll be doing some down on the west side as well. I think it was well received and, and gets us out in the community and changes the light of law enforcement. I have to say Sergeant Hovinghoff was out there with the kids doing, uh, headstands and cartwheels.
I missed that.
You missed it. It was.
It's great.
It was very entertaining.
Did he have his bow tie on when he was doing it or?
No, he, he, he was playing close. It, it was very nice to see the interaction and we real, uh, we had a great time out there. The faith, and I'll give you a little background. The Faith in Blue began in twenty twenty and it was launched to facilitate safer, stronger, more just and unified committees by directly enabling local partnerships among law enforcement professionals, residents, business and community groups throughout the connections of local faith-based organizations. So like I said, we're excited. We're gonna plan a little better next year and, and advertise a little more. I think the banners for this event were provided by the Faith and Blue organization. Didn't arrive till after the event. The only thing we got before the event was the T-shirts that they provided. So on October nineteenth, Sergeant Fred Killian and K nine Deputy Adam Diamond attended the K nine liability three sixty seminar held in Seattle. This seminar covered all the aspects of liability associated with a canine program. And it allowed them to learn what other agencies are doing for liability and the oopses that, um, other canine departments have. Uh, when it comes to liability with, with having a canine. On October eleventh, I attended the Washington State Sheriff's Association meeting. It was in Ellensburg. There were active discussions on all of the current issues facing law enforcement across the state. We discussed various bills that are currently being reviewed by the state legislature. The status of the Criminal Justice Training Commission, including the lack of academies for corrections deputies. They're fifteen academies behind for corrections. So that's pretty astounding.
We're, we're working on that with Washington to try to change some legislation to get them off their hands, but we'll see how that goes.
Right. Well, and by RCW, it says that, uh, corrections are supposed to be certified within six months of higher date. In itself, the state is breaking the, its own law. So it is what it is right now. Um, the peer support team, we have met and we've developed some policy procedures. We're working on our own mission statement, assembling a steering committee and collaborating, collaborating with behavioral health with assistance to the program for oversight. At this time, since we're still in the developing phase of the program, we won't be taking on the, the lead on any debriefs, but we will of course assist and gain knowledge and, and valuable tools that way. We are implementing a new wellness app that is provided through WASPIC and no cost to our agency. WASPIC last year, um, it's called the Cortico app and it is through Lexipol. And it's an app that provides resources for mental health, physical health, including sleep and fitness programs. And it will be available to all KCSO employees, their spouses and retired employees. So it's really unique. It will actually be customized for our department. It will have our patch on there and our bat. I submitted just our patch for that app. And then it will have our peer support team on there. It will have our EAP on there. Uh, with the link to the EAP as well as all local resources. We'll have bios of all of the peer support team as well, but it has resources for all different types of mental health. But whether you're a first responder or there'll just be a great tools to assist with any of the mental health. I reached out to, um, Tyrone with behavioral health. Um, because we have to have somebody oversee what we're doing and review. Um, you don't get to see like who was participated in a debrief, but review and make sure that we're doing everything right and have suggestions. We don't have a psychologist on staff or nor can we afford one, but we do have some really good behavioral health specialists that we could rely on. So him and I worked together. He was like, really impressed that we have like this, as he, he says, groundbreaking opportunity. So we'll continue and hopefully by the end of next week, we'll have the Cortico app up and going. And then the peer support team within the next thirty days. On Monday, October sixteenth, I attended the Golden Dale City Council. Where they were gonna, given the review to the flock camera presentation. On the seventeenth, I went to the Benjen City Council meeting. And I think that working together, we can collaborate and, and have a really good, hopefully working relationship and they'll see the value in the flock cameras as well. On October fir- twenty-first, um, I, I won't go into this a whole lot, but we did have the fundraiser program for the Posse Scouts. I can tell you that these kids were so excited. They greeted you at the door with a handshake and an introduction. They stood at the tables and they were selling themselves with the, the products and encouraging people to bid. They went out and all of the items that we sold that day, and I can't even tell you how many tables of stuff we had. Those kids did that themselves. We did not go out and get those items. Those kids did while they drug their parents around. So they did a phenomenal job. We had things ranging from Pendleton Roundup Tickets to, um, a getaway package that included a stay at a hotel in Skimmin- in Cascade Locks with a Schmenia golf package. It was amazing. They did phenomenal.
And a shotgun.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And we had a shotgun that was donated. So we had a really good turnout. We anticipate that our next one will be bigger and better. We will get flyers out for the next one and advertise a little better so that we can, um, increase the number of participants. So, um, Range Timber Deputy, uh, Chris Simons, he's been busy out patrolling. Um, he's assisted with cattle drives, though we've had a couple lately and then patrolling the woods for trespassing, illegal hunting and timber theft. I talked to him, um, after opening hunting season because we anticipated some issues up on WPT land. They had no issues. No, um, he come in contact with a couple of hunters. Talked to them and they left the area. There was no confrontation or anything. They were from out of the area, so they weren't aware. So that were actually a lot smoother than I think we anticipated it.
I might add, I think the reason for that, ahead of time, we put it out to all the media sources, including Spokane over war, uh, Seattle and those areas, so that they were aware the lands were closed because otherwise yearly people that come in there to hunt, they got their spots and all that would be outraged to pack up and come to Clicktack County and find out they can't camp there and hunt. So I think that helped getting that out.
Right. Yeah, I'm sure it did. So he's staying busy. He's working lots of hours and, and enjoys being in the woods. Uh, KCSO deputies, we've done defensive tact training, defensive tactics training in October. We have multiple first aid classes coming up. I think I have to have six different classes to accommodate schedules. And those will go from the end of October through November for both patrol and corrections. Deputy Beasley and Deputy Chancelloru will be in Spokane next week for instructor development training. They have to have that training in order to be, um, in-house instructors, I guess, for the uh, Beasley will be assisting with EVOC training next year. And Chancelloru will be, uh, he's one of our defensive tactics instructors. So we anticipate that the last quarter of twenty twenty-three will be just as busy as the first three. That's about all I have. I included a report in here. It shows like the number of incidents per day for the first twenty-four days of October. October and this morning, by eight fifty five, we had six calls just for the county this morning. It was already rocking and rolling when I signed into service at seven.
And I might add. I give the total calls to the county and Carmen broke down what the sheriff's office say. But keep in mind, we also answer.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I I but I gotta leave. Appreciate it. You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Bob.
Take care.
Thank you.
Um one question on the Posse fundraiser. Is that Posse fundraiser set up as a five oh one C three or will those funds be coming into the county? And have we checked with treasurer and auditor to make sure we got our audit stuff handled? Um to do all that.
It will come into our one twenty four fund. It's not going into the general fund.
So the same the same place where you currently have Posse. Well, or donation dollars going into.
We've got, we've got one on each side. And so we're we've got it.
I just want to make sure nobody's going to use that against us.
Right, that's right.
But I'll I can address more during my.
So I'm done. It's uh Chief Copes. He's on the show now.
Good morning, sheriffs. Um so currently we have forty people in custody. One person is in Eastern State Hospital receiving treatment. Um we're currently shuffling. Well, shortly here in a few days, shuffling the sheriff's office around a little bit. I'm turning the former deputy's break room that is inside the jail into the jail office Sergeant Gillum. Our records clerk Suzie and I will be in the same office after this is completed. Uh it didn't make good sense to me to have the three of us in separate offices. Um different parts of the building separated by three security doors. The mining offices will make us more efficient and I will have better communication with my staff. It will also put me closer uh for emergency backup if it's necessary. The deputy's break room uh is now going to be in the sheriff's office. Um and thanks ahead of time to the buildings and grounds and IT who will help us get this move completed. Background investigations are almost complete on the two new applicants. Um one of them just got completed. Right after I wrote this and had it printed out um for the corrections officer position. The other person for the control board operator uh is still undergoing the background check. Uh so it'll be nice to get them uh working. We've still got to do the polygraph and psych eval for the corrections. Deputy, uh but hopefully we get those done quickly. We have four uh people being transported to state prison this week. Uh last week we had a couple of mental health transports, one to Kirkland, one to Marysville. Uh this probably is well known, but we need more mental health facilities. Uh very badly here in this state and this and and then in this area. Uh most often we have to call in two people on their days off to do these transports. Uh this gets expensive with two deputies on overtime for ten to twelve hours on a round trip. Not to mention that our corrections deputies, mental health, you know, they don't get. Their downtime on their days off when we have to call them in to do these transports all over the state. Um on a positive note, I have uh have to commend jail staff. Um they come in when they're asked to, they answer their phone. We have a fantastic group of professionals that work in the jail. They constantly put up with what it takes to deal with people who are experiencing their worst days when they're in jail. And most of those people don't appreciate the the good care that that your corrections deputies take with them. Uh day in and day out with long hours and no complaining. They are all true professionals. And uh they don't usually get the recognition that they deserve. Um but I just corrected that a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I agree with you. I try to thank them for their service when I see them, but um. I I agree with you. It's not often enough. We live in a society now that uh wants to blame law enforcement or everything. Uh wants to defund the police and take away every tool you have and we as a community. Need to do more to appreciate our law enforcement, which is why I thank Carmen for going out city by city and. And talking to them. I think that face to face uh builds those relationships back up along with the barbecues. Good work.
Can I make a mention real quick? He brought up the mental health transports. I don't know if you're aware, but.
I was contacted last week. There was a civilian uh. Not in custody person at the hospital who needed a transfer to a mental health facility and. The person had already been at the hospital for thirty six hours. She was medically cleared and. They had paged KBH or paged the ambulance to transport her. About four hours later, there was still no transport. And they called me and asked if I would do the transport. We were already short staffed that day and I said, I will do what I can do, but let me make a phone call. So I got ahold of Aaron Quinn because who better to stick on them than to make them do their job over there? So.
Over there.
Uh EMS.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure the right people. Getting their finger poke.
Um. So within a few short hours, I did hear them bring in medic two and they went en route. To the facility with that female. We did not have to do that transport. So I just want you guys to be aware that this is an ongoing issue. So we have done. For civilians this year, seven transports. To mental health facilities that the EMS refused to. They have now done three. Total for the year. So I, the problem isn't going away and I think we need to keep addressing it until we find a solution.
I I agree with you. I've been preaching that from day one and I hope. To get a second vote eventually to change it.
It has to change. That's all I have. I'll let Karen take it over.
Good morning. Budget, we're starting to get to the finish line for twenty twenty three. And we're gonna start tightening our budget uh belt just to make sure that we make it um. We're we're just like right where we need to be, but I wanna make sure that we don't have any surprises. Um we are also increasing our efforts in collections of revenues, watching several processes, making sure. That the bills have been paid appropriately by the people requesting those processes. So that way we. Increase our revenue. The only one I don't have any control over is Department of Justice. When they house at the corrections. So that's the only line item in our budget that we don't physically have control over. So that's where I am on the budget. Um there was the supplemental that I submitted to Jennifer this year. Or this last week um by the due date uh moving the items in the. In- increasing our fund for one twenty four, but I also did request some of the VRNR from last year. That got put back into VRNR because the vehicles came late and we paid the ins expenses in this year's. Those are the only two supplement. That's the first time I've done a supplemental since I've started this. We've tried not to.
But the key to the supplemental is there will not be impact to the county's general fund. Very good. I wish we can get everybody to do that.
Um contract wise, we had hoped to have the Carol on to you today. However, as I was going through my final proof proof of the contract, I saw the words. City uh Binge and White Salmon Police Department. I'm like, ah, that's not, that's not us. We need to. So I had to send it back for the correction. It's all been approved. You'll have it next week. Um I did finish both uh Goldendale and White Salmon City contracts. And um when I get back to the office, I'm gonna hit the send to both of those places, so.
What did you, what did you do for an increase? Are you just?
Just the same three percent, just like we did for Binge in. So um and then we're just gonna be having some WASP grants for the traffic. And Parks and Rec um Parks and Rec is incredibly happy with our performance on the Marine. I spoke with the new department chair there and he's gonna come and visit us this next year and. But they're very happy with our performance. So well done to all the Marine deputies. Um in the civil division, we're doing plenty of CPLs, process services. We're gonna be hosting a few. Sheriff sales, which will be um. Entertaining because that's the one where I have to stand on the front porch of the the steps and read and. It'll be entertaining. I'm just gonna say um. And then uh McKenna and I went up to the Leira uh conference in Blaine, Washington. We waved at Vancouver, BC a lot um and. We did not cross the border um, but we really wanted to, but we learned a lot um. Because the focus of that conference is law enforcement records, information and records. And so they bring up all the new rules and laws for this year. They've got great training. And we're gonna send more people next year. Um and it gave us a. Opportunity to talk with other agencies, which affects you guys because this is something we need to discuss. So a lot of the other counties and cities are just are charging for. The redaction time for the body camera images. So a thirty minute video could take up to four hours to redact. And so. They're charging, a lot of the places are charging a dollar a minute for redaction time, not the time that it takes for the video.
Is that something that we're able to do or are we gonna have?
We are able to do, but we um I want to put together a resolution to include all of the charging for. To add that into our fee charges. The other thing we want to do is a flat fee of X amount of dollars for each body cam video. Because we may spend on that first one that we redact. Six, eight hours, depending on what the video, how long it is, how many different officers. Um and deputies have participated in that call. So there's a lot of time that. You know, a dollar a minute obviously is not covering any of our time, but if we charge that flat fee, we can at least. If it's requested multiple times, we can at least recoup some of that. Um because it's only gonna get more. Um so I will present that as a resolution at some point in time in the near future after I talk with the PA's office. And um.
Yeah, submit that, submit the PA's opinion request so we we're covered that way.
But I think that it's a way to recoup the hours and hours and hours of redaction.
I don't think we ever recoup.
Well, we're not gonna recoup a lot of it, but if we can make a dent in. From from a money person, you know.
Because you charge it might limit the frivolous for your requests, so.
Yep, um sex offenders. I have included in our packet, one of the. Major focuses that I'm having, the PA's office is having to deal with in juvenile. So House Bill thirteen ninety four is um. Basically releasing the juveniles from having who were sentenced in adult court and having them have to register as a sex offender anymore. Um there's new laws coming out, so I've included all that information for you. Um. But basically, the downstream effect will be if it's a level one, level two, level three. If they have served two years to three years, depending on the very, the like rape one. Versus rape of a child. Those are not seen as equal charges. Rape one is. They'll be able to register for a very long time. Rape of a child, no charges. They don't have to register. That's what the Congress, uh the Senate and Congress people are doing at this time and they're trying to also get. No one to have to register as a sex offender. So um. There's a lot of people wringing their hands, shaking their heads and quite upset about the whole. Um. Flow of how this is going. We've got people calling and saying, well, I know this person is a sex offender. They're not on your website. Level one people are not on our website, only level two, level three. Um so we have eighty nine uh in our county. Um and the visitors to our county are very great. They come and check in. And then they check out. Um they're following the rules. Um the flock cameras will help us catch any uh sex offenders that are in areas that they shouldn't be. We did have that a couple of times at the Huck Fest in Binge where a sex offender was hanging out in the park. And so we removed him from the park. Um sent him on his way and he's he's somebody who's registered in Schumaney County, not even with us, so. Um so this is where I'm spending a good chunk of my time. Um. So more on that at future time, but I also did give you some information in the packet. On who has to register, why they have to register, how registration occurs. Um body worn cameras, oh uh Range Timber doing great. I've got the contracts ready for. Um each of our shareholders. I'm sending them a survey monkey um. Questionnaire that gives me the information like who's the contract, who's the fiscal contract contact? Who's the property contact? How many acres? That type of thing. Um. We're going to be sending invoices out to them next week. Um and we'll be billing on actual and this year they're getting a little bit of a break because. We had the donated time from the Range Timber deputies, so our salary hasn't been as high as it's been in the past. Um but I, next year when it increases greatly, they'll be kept apprised quarterly of where we are. Uh this year will be at like twelve cents an acre. Next year, we're hoping for twenty. Um and so that's continuing. Um body worn, any questions? Okay, body worn cameras are functioning and working well and redaction is um proceeding now. When we talk redaction in the body worn camera, if they walk into a residence. That has to be redacted. That's the residence owner has the um right to privacy. And which means when that's requested, it's all redacted. Same with speech, same with uh hospital rooms. Anything medical. So that's where all those hours of production are coming in. Um Profi is doing amazing. He got to attend a call the other day and he was really hoping to go. Um.
For a run?
For a run, but he didn't get to because all of a sudden it turned into a civil matter, not criminal. So um that's where that. K nine liability class really helps differentiate what we can do and what we can't. Um. Marine Patrol, we do, we only have the fourteen. You two are on our list. Randy knows to contact you to inspect your boats, um but he does have less than fourteen. He just hasn't entered in into the system yet.
If part of that inspection is that you have to have a current registration on it, he might as well not call me because it's just sat there parked. For two years, so it ain't.
That's fine. Do you have a kayak? I do.
Does fat guy look like the kayaks?
And I put mine away for the winter and it'd take an hour.
Do not worry about it at all. We've got plenty because kayaks and canoes also qualify. So um. Uh well, we're gonna meet our deadline. Don't worry. Um.
In the parking lot, he just gotta drive by and walk around it.
Don't worries. Um the Posse, uh again, we want to thank them for all of their efforts efforts this year. But as you kind of have gathered from all of our different re- um reports. The Posse Scouts are the winners this month of everything that they've done. Um. One of the scouts brought in twenty seven of those baskets and items. Um, one of the scouts brought in twenty-seven of those baskets and items. And in those baskets was not just one item. We're talking. Um, Hotel Iconica, Dinner at Sixth Street Bistro, chocolates, Bubba's Brew. Uh, for coffee the next morning, wine tasting, that was one basket. Um. They, they, the hundreds of things, but, and we had ninety-seven plates used at the dinner. Um, and the cost of the dinner was picked up by, uh. An individual outside of the donor process, and so. Did not cost us anything to host that dinner, um, it's not coming out of our profits. Um, so, the youngest bidder was not, uh, at nine dollars was one of our Posse Scouts. Four of our Posse Scouts purchased items, so.
Got the other Rice Krispie treat that I didn't.
That's the one.
I know it was gluten free, she wanted it, so I didn't bid on.
Um, but anyway, so we had the young buyers as well, um, but we raised. As cash donations, two thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. In addition, we had four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars in the auction items. An equal seven thousand dollars that was brought in so far. Um, and I, and I think we're gonna try to maintain the T-shirt look. Because, uh, I know the Sheriff Songer wants little western shirts for these guys. But we've already had shirts, so, we're just gonna.
Restained or, yeah.
They're kids.
And they grow fast, right, I'm.
Yeah.
They grow fast.
Now, if you, if you get the adult Posse people to put on an adult Posse fundraiser to cover their stuff, you would make all three.
We're, we're going for that.
And I will show up to that one.
And I, we were talking about, and I'm gonna reach out to one of our Posse members who owns. The Tin Roof Barn, is that what it's called?
Mm-hmm.
They own that, so we're going to look into that for our employee banquet and everything else. Last year you asked why we were going outside the county, there wasn't a space big enough. Inside the county, and now we've actually gonna have two, because we've got the tin roof that we can run. But the new place in Bingen is the Surf Museum and Surf Shop. He has decided that he's gonna turn that into an event space for the time being. Because it's double the cost of what he had anticipated the renovations to be. So we are gonna have actually two really good, um, places to host large events, so.
Just remember the tin roof, uh, has open slots, so you wanna do that in the summertime.
Right, yeah.
Away from wedding season.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm, but, yeah, um. The other thing that I'd like to bring up that I don't have on here is fraud. As you're aware, fraud calls are on the increase, and unfortunately. Multiple, uh, citizens within this county have been affected by that. Some in the tens and tens and ten, tens of thousands, like six of them, tens of thousands of dollars in. Uh, money that was taken from her. She was conned into it, she went to the bank. They told her exactly what to say to the bank, so that the bank would release the money to her. These people are suave and very convincing. And they came to her house and picked up the funds, which means.
That's a new one.
Exactly, they know where she lives. Now, the FBI is looking into it, but we are gonna continue also, they, they've asked us to continue. Trying to pull up any little leads we can get, because they, um. Have had a lot of homicides lately, and that's where their focus is, but they don't want this to be. On the back burner, so.
Good place for a flock camera, easy comeback.
Already, already thought of that. But I did order from, uh, the government website. Everything you can find on fraud literature. I got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of things coming, and I will dispense them to every place that we can find a gathering of people. Um, and we can order more, but we've got them in Spanish and English, and.
Yeah, I've worked with our senior services department to try to. Increase their education, um, to the senior population, but so many of them just don't get the newsletter and don't. Perake and.
Well, it amazes me the number of people who watch the news and. You know, one of the big fraud ones is, they call, your grandson's in jail. You need to bail him out, and you need to provide, that just happened this last week here in Clickedat County.
I got a notification from somebody that, for the first time ever, somebody spoofed my Facebook. Because I don't click, you know, they send those links over instant message, I've never fell for anything. But somebody didn't get into my account, they just created another one that looks like me, and sent it to my friends.
Mm-hmm.
That I had found some cool grant thing at DHHS.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they can qualify for three hundred grand, blah, 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 and sent it as me and, yeah, not me. So hopefully you don't get any calls for that one.
I'll put it on the list, um, but yes, we're increasing our fraud awareness because this is just becoming a rampant problem. And so.
Yeah, I'm worried that people are gonna see that one and think I am who I am where I'm sitting and, uh, just trust it.
Yeah. Any questions?
I don't know, I ask him as we go, you guys?
Nope, no, um, actually, on the processes orders served, is that, that's total for the year, that's not just in the last month, right?
That is total for the year.
Okay, I was gonna say, wow, you're really.
And probably in January, I'll switch out the, I, I never like to change anything mid-year. So in January, I'll probably give you just a grid of totals for that month. And then February, and then the total on the bottom line.
Is there any difference between the ones you attached to the back and the ones that are in the middle of the packet?
Didn't realize, well, I, as I was furiously typing my report, they were photocopying and everything, so. You may have got, I noticed there were.
I was like, it's really thick and it looks like I'm reading the same thing.
There's a devil in there, yeah.
Yeah, we were a little behind. Uh, so why do some of the officers have like a hundred and fifteen service papers and the other ones have like twelve or fifteen?
It depends on what types of calls they get, and sometimes they'll hand the papers off to somebody else if they can't get to. Um, we try to spread it out, but.
And I would imagine day shift, night shift, there's less papers in some part of the county than others.
Yeah, so if they're on night shift, if they're on night shift, they can't serve after nine P.M.
Right.
Um, and they come on at five, and then if there's calls, accidents, et cetera.
So my next question is, most of the paper serving. Do within the cities, do we do the serving in the cities, or do we hand it off to them?
No, we are required by law to do the paper service in cities and we.
Within the boundary of the county.
Do we have a good number of how many papers are served within the cities? I'm going in front of the White Salmon City Council and they're asking why they have to pay county taxes and what they get from it, and. This is one of those things in which.
Yeah, I'm happy to get you all the stats on, because literally. Goldendale and White Salmon do have a lot of paper service within the cities.
That's a radio, nine one one radio tower use.
Yeah, but they do pay for a little bit of that. We do have an agreement on that, but we don't have anything, so.
Nothing compares to the one point six million for the radio tower, so, you know.
Um, I can buy a flock cameras and compare.
I'm going in on the first, so anything you can get me before that in terms of what percentage goes to the city. And I know we can't figure out the cost, but at least I could say, well, this is a service that.
No, I, I can actually, you know, roughly say, you know, a deputy, sometimes it's fifteen minutes. I can look at a specific point in time and calculate a rough cost of.
That would be amazing.
This is the percentage, so, yeah.
But I, when I look through all the different departments between the Assessor, the Treasurer and everything else, and I look at how much the city's actually paying taxes versus. How much we actually spend serving them, I think they'll be surprised to find out they're getting a pretty great deal.
Right.
But, yeah.
Well, and not only that, is that we first build things and then they annex it in, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Not to mention the deterrent of having another law enforcement officer in their city while they're serving those papers.
Yep.
Just the visual.
Just the visual.
Yeah, we back it, we back them up all the time, and I was.
And vice versa. And vice versa there, is that a good point? Absolutely.
And just a reminder to general public listening. It's getting dark. I watched somebody almost get hit in a crosswalk last night in Bingen crossing from the Chevron to Pack Pride. And the guy just kept going, everybody else was stopped, and then that individual followed the pedestrian. Um, for a lightway, so I just sat there and watched, and then they parted ways.
The dangers of crosswalks on SR fourteen.
Well, and. Um, when you're meeting with Binge, have them put a sign out on fourteen when the theater's on. So that you know when you turn up, oh, that you're gonna run into, um, exiting Rocky Horror Picture Show people.
Was one of those people.
I didn't run you over, I promise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything else really good of the order before we recess for lunch?
I don't have anything. I think we did a great job, started early and still went all the way till twelve. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to re- adjur- or recess for the lunch hour.
And I'll second.
Big motion, second to recess for lunch, Anita Carmel, I mean, and that was a friendly amendment. Um, all those in favor of recessing for lunch, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Alrighty, enough about bathing twine. We will open our afternoon, uh, meeting of the Kentucky County Board of Commissioners. Uh, again, all three commissioners are present, we will, um, we do not have it on our posted agenda. Uh, to do citizen comment at one o'clock because we've moved that to nine A.M. Um, we've notified everybody on Zoom for the last probably month that we're going to be doing that. But for this one time on the day of our new meeting, uh, which is today, I did wanna allow anyone. That has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners that has not had a chance to do it today. Uh, to come forward and give us their comment now. Next week, I did not plan to do an afternoon, just the morning. Um. But if anybody didn't get the memo and has citizen comment now and wants to make it, you're more than welcome to raise your hand or initiate yourself. Brenda Kay.
Hi, I'm, I just wanted to, I emailed all of you this morning, and that's my comment.
Hey.
Thank you.
Um. Oh, I got it, yep, uh, had to do with, um. Getting the SEPA, uh, official change. And I, I did answer, I told her, nobody wants to move faster than us to get that done, but we're still waiting for you. Um, before we connect. On that one? Oh, I haven't seen. Oh, there it is, boom, done, at nine thirty, we were in this meeting, which is why I haven't seen it. Um. Okay, I'll read that. Anybody else have a citizen comment for us today? Not seeing anything. Hopefully my seatmates at some point today, maybe we can have time to. Read through this legal opinion, which we may not, it looks like five pages or something.
I do.
Um. I didn't know it was here to be able to read through it at lunch. Um, maybe we can squeeze in, uh, topic of conversation later today. Uh, about what we read, how we move forward. Uh, and I'll try to read it as I can in between everything else that's happening. Uh, anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners that has not had a chance to comment today? Being done. Alrighty, I will just advise you all again, going forward till next week, our citizen comment time will be about nine oh five. And we will keep comments open for as long as people wanna comment and close them after nobody wants to comment. Um, with that, we will move on. To Department Update, Planning Department Associate, Lead Planner, Lori Anderson.
So, once again, I wasn't sure what all you wanted to know, so. Hopefully you'll bear with me, and, um, I'll give you an update, you may have questions. Uh, basically, as you know, we had our Planning Commission Public Hearing last week. And Planning Commission will be making or forwarding the recommendation. To the Board Accounting Commissioners on November seventh, as a public meeting. And this is in regards to the solar prohibition in those certain designated areas. And then, I could talk a lot, or we can just move on, um, November twentieth, the Planning Commission has their workshop. On the Critical Areas Ordinance, and kind of a little update, they actually. Closed the public hearing on that back in September of last year. And the SEPA to this Critical Areas Ordinance was appealed. So the SEPA appeals kind of on hold until the Planning Commission. Makes a recommendation to the Board Accounting Commissioners, and this again is on critical areas. And, um, we've had the consultant, um, Dan Nichols with DCG Watershed Company. Helping the county the last few years on this, and he will be here on November twentieth for. Well, not here personally, but virtually for the workshop. And Mr. Nichols was in town on Friday, so he met with myself and Commissioner Zoller briefly. And basically, to continue to have his services beyond the meeting, Planning Commission meeting on. The twentieth of November, uh, we've ran out of money. And I do apologize, this is a bad time to talk about money, but, um, he did put together a draft proposal. And that is attached to this for your consideration. Otherwise, from what he said, basically, he'll help us on the twentieth for the workshop. And then. Then we need to pay more, basically. And, um, just a little side note with meeting with Dan Nichols with the Watershed Group, um. I did learn that they actually do a lot of consulting for various county, county planning departments. And that's just something I said, oh, good to know, and, um, for your reference mainly. And some other things that are going on, we know the prosecutor attorney, um, got an opinion back to the commissioners today. And, um, we certainly look forward to something coming about and getting a planning director. Or some help in the Planning Department in the near future, but we'll just continue on and serve our, our citizens and do what we can. In regards to under canvas, we have no update. Bluebird Solar, um, we're still waiting. I guess there's some potential comments that may come in, and then. Of course, we don't have the SEPA responsible official at this point, but, um. Once those comments are in and the EIS is finalized, then after the fact, um, at least seven days. Then an EOZ permit could be issued, but again, I think you would have a planning director or. A firm or somebody helping us with that, because lord knows I would need help. And just that kind of another thing, and I think I was walking in about the same time, somebody provided some public comment. That, um, we do have some short plats and boundary line adjustments that are going to need signatures in the near future. That, um, we do have some short plats and boundary line adjustments that are going to need signatures in the near future so they could be filed. And the other thing that goes along with that, the assessor's office. Um, it'll be December fifth of this year, they actually freeze all the values and during that time, that'll extend into the middle towards the end of January. With those frozen values, no plats, boundary line adjustments, et cetera, can be filed. So just something to keep in mind, and I know you're all working towards, um. Our, getting a planning director, somebody to help us and. Kind of going along with that, I want to kind of give a big shout out to the various county departments and stuff. They've definitely stepped up and helped planning quite a bit and. Very nice to know we have a great team out there. So I'm certainly available to answer any questions and. Otherwise we'll go forth and plan.
If I may, so, um. I know in the past, um, staff would pretty much do most of the work on the SEPA and, um, for short plats and boundary line adjustments. Cause that's what we have in front of us now. And staff does almost all that. The planning director just does a cursory review to make sure it's all right and then as well as the sign as a SEPA responsible official, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that, uh, Mochi wasn't doing more than just the, the checking the work of which.
Well, and, and obviously she would edit as needed. As we all.
We're learning.
Learning curves and.
I have a question. Do you feel comfortable? Um, if the board so felt advised. To name you as one of the SEPA officials to cover. Short plats and things like that, but not flood planes and under canvas and the solar development, just the little stuff.
I would be somewhat comfortable with guidance and then, um, I did read part of the prosecutor's attorney's, um, opinion. So they kind of emphasize a lot of the duties and the expertise and. And need to have. Have advanced help at times. And I don't know how or who would distinguish what's. Normal every day versus something big and complicated, which I think we can.
You know, with, with the document that Mochi gave us on the duties and what, who can do what, I think that if. Something like that, then you could delineate on there, you know, is there, can, can somebody be the SEPA responsible official for X, Y, and Z based on their experience?
I think.
Is that what you're thinking?
I think we need to spell it out in the code. Cause we're gonna have to update the code to make it happen. So I think we need to take Mochi's little box of who does what. And say this one's Lori, this one's Lori, this one's Lori, this one's. Um, outside counsel, this one's outside counsel. So there's no question between, I'm sorry, so there's no question between. Um, two different SEPA officials who they're. Who they take, who they. What projects they do. And then obviously the consultant would be there to, for you to ask questions of. Kind of a scenario was what I was like. I don't want us to have to. Spend taxpayer money for the next however long year that we're waiting for a planning person to send every short plot and boundary adjustment and everything to an outside consultant. Um, if it's not legally necessary.
So, um. I was wondering how fast all of these processes would catch up with us and we did get an email today. Where people are starting to vocalize, we have permits coming in and we're worried about processes. Uh, so that sets me on alert. I think the public deserves professionalism. And I think Lori deserves security in her job. Um. And not have to be put into the position of, does she sign for it? Does she not sign for it? Um, because that puts her with the legal opinion at jeopardy in certain places personally. Um, if we have an outside consultant willing to step in immediately. We could cure our processes and keep our public moving and serve them to the best of everybody's ability with professional services. Not just saying, well, today we're gonna pick this or tomorrow we're gonna pick that. And then we slow down because we have to ask questions or ask the prosecutor. We need that office to be in order. And it would be my opinion that we need to reach out as quickly as possible to somebody. Um, at that level that's responsible, that can help in that office and take over a bunch of the duties. Uh, and of course Lori and the staff are great. They're moving forward, they're doing what they do. And that would allow them to do that, not put this added worry or burden on them.
Okay, so for my clarification, I want to know what I think he said. Is make the outside hired consultant do all SEPA's. Is that what I heard?
Um, no, because the girls already do SEPA's and they do a good job of it. And they can send them over for Mochi's review is what I heard.
Right, but the official that signs off on the SEPA's.
Correct.
Was Mochi. I was talking for boundary line adjustment type thing, short plots. Lori do them and for everything bigger goes to consultant to be the designated official. Who are you saying to be the designated official? Uh, just everything goes to the?
Yes.
Consultant?
I think keep, keep. Cohesion, keep it the way as though Mochi isn't gone for that portion. Uh, she, that person could be there to help drive that traffic and keep it going. And the, and the girls have an assistant that helps them keep going and then we don't hit this ditch that we're heading for. It's, it's gonna come quick.
See, we still have a legal question in on. How do we go about obtaining an outside consultant to do that if we wanted to choose somebody other than watershed company? We've already been through the process with the watershed group. So if we wanted to expand that and allow them to do it, I don't, I think that's good to go. But if we wanted to hire a different company that maybe had more. Experience, uh, with some of our bigger projects, uh, and or had more. Uh, common ideology.
Mm-hmm.
The question is out to the prosecutor on whether there's some kind of dollar threshold that we can just go find that person, hire that person. Or do we have to go to an RFP or RFQ? So we have that legal question was submitted at the same time. We don't have that one back yet. It's the same deal. I don't want to just go do it.
Okay.
And then find out we're in violation. And next thing you know, I'm being charged with, you know, something.
Then I'll say, I'll send a second request, uh, because that's something we need to know today. Of how, if we choose to hire an outside consultant, what's our process to do that? And because it's kind of a new position, I, I don't think unilaterally we can just move over. I think we're gonna have to probably go out for RFP or RFQ. Uh, but we need to do it as soon as possible.
So I guess my worry is. If we are going to, and we haven't heard Commissioner Anderson's opinion yet, but if we go your way and. The outside consultant does all of the SEPA's. They're going to all be on hold in the planning department. Until we go through the entire RFP RFQ. Contract negotiation, I mean, it could be a while. Uh, your thoughts, Mr. Anderson?
I would say that for the best interest of the citizens of the county, um, it's been as long as I can remember since. A boundary line adjustment or a, um, short plot was appealed. And that's what we have on the docket. We have residents of the county who are trying to get their stuff done before the end of the year and before this and. We need to either set an interim and it can just be called an interim planning director over the top of it. That can be another department head. That has, that has the ability to sign. And we set internal policies or protocol so that the staff is reviewing each other, you, you know. And so in essence, you'll have that second set of eyes and then that, that. Interim director or someone with the name can be there for the next couple of months. Um, while we, we go through this hiring process, we haven't even got the. Got it out on the street, so it might be next year before we get to that. In terms of the bigger things. Um, Bluebird, um, yeah, we're still waiting on comments. Uh, but that's gonna slow down no matter what. If we bring in outside SEPA official to run that, that could get really expensive for us really fast. Um, long plats, I don't, we don't have any long plats currently in process, right?
Correct.
So what if, say, Bluebird? We don't get a planning director type person. You're kind of saying it could be expensive to have the consultant do the SEPA for Bluebird. Comments are in, it's just ready to be written. And so, I mean, that could technically put Bluebird on hold for a year.
Possibly.
I don't think that's a wise.
But, but that's something, and, but then it comes down to it, you know, we also have a reimbursement agreement.
That's my point.
Bluebird, so that we bring someone in, then it's not gonna cost the county anything.
Kind of where I'm coming from.
If we do.
With, with those bigger projects, anything we have the consultant do the SEPA for, the county's not paying for. They should be reimbursing the.
SEPA's already in essence done.
Yes, but you still need your SEPA official that you designate for large projects to go through the SEPA, make conditions. Uh, and or rubber stamp and or make conditions. So there will be some time looking at that. And if you hire an outside consultant, that is, should be. In our reimbursement agreement to be able to be reimbursed by Bluebird. I don't want to make. A organization, I don't care if I like them or don't like them, wait a year. Uh, but if, it, when they're going to pay the increased cost. So I think that's almost intentionally stalling if we go that route. Um, I don't mind the bigger stuff going to the consultant because technically it shouldn't cost us. We should have outside or reimbursement agreements for all of it. And then they are the trained land use experts slash consultants. That if it does go to a hearing or appeal or whatever. We should be covered under the legal group without having to pay that big expense. So that was my thinking. If we had Lori be for the smaller projects and, and literally checked off what those were. And then everything else goes to the outside consultant guy. Most of that outside consultant guy should be reimbursed. Or gal, sorry.
So I guess the question becomes. In order for us to change. An ordinance, because this is part of the zoning ordinance on who's the SEPA responsible official.
For the SEPA ordinance.
For, for the SEPA, we would need to go to a hearing. In order to make that change because it's a change in county code. It's not just a resolution.
Correct, but it isn't just the SEPA, it's the flood plain and everything else. So. I would, you know, I don't know that there's small flood plain stuff.
Honestly, we don't deal with very many flood plain permits. I, I think our.
Kind of do it all at the same time is my point.
And I think our big thing, SEPA is very, very important. But right now is we're going to have a backlog on short plats and a couple of boundary line adjustments not getting filed. And. Not easy to separate one from another, but potentially you.
So one of the questions asked in the legal opinion that I asked. Was examples of wordage for us to change our code. But it sounds like before they get into that, they want to know who we're picking so they can write it correctly. So. Technically, if we wanted to have that discussion today and we so chose, you know, off Mochi's list, Lori for this, this and this. And outside consultant for this stuff and the flood stuff and the whatever. And then submitted that to them, they should be able to work on the language for the code change. The yes, we'll end up needing a public hearing. Um. I, I was hopeful that. We could just change the language. To, uh, something of as the Board of Commissioners deems. Responsible kind of thing, and then we can change it next time off a resolution. Without having to change the whole language again, when we do get a planning director. Cause then we're gonna have to go in and change all the language back again to say planning director, blah, blah, blah. So I was hoping the code would just be able to say as the board deems worthy or whatever. And then designate the person or the outside consultant as just a resolution.
I, I feel like, um. The conversations just kind of digressed off of the main topic and that is. We've, we're hearing from the public, we need to serve the public. So to shortcut. Conversation and changing code and everything down the line, we need to make a decision, how are we gonna keep that office functioning? And that's either in my mind, interim director, a person willing. At the level capable, has the education, able to provide these services, or that's outside contractor. But that's getting a person in that place, so we're not putting the girls on overload or at risk trying to decide where and what is their duties, not their duties. But we need kind of a navigator, flight pilot in there that has the capability to sign these documents and the background.
That's what we're discussing. Because we have to change the code.
I just.
In order to do that.
No, if we hire an interim for Mochi's position.
No, so one thing we could.
Code says planning director, not interim planning director. The reason Mochi was promoted from an interim planning director to a planning director was so that she could do SEPA's.
No.
Uh, according to the prosecutor, Mochi, that's the case.
Well. I, I think we'll have a different conversation about that probably. Um, I don't think it's that, that hard to get this done.
Another legal review then. If you're gonna name anybody but the planning director.
There's some, I think there's a misunderstanding there and that's all I'll say. Uh, and we'll, we can look at that, but. Again, time is of the essence, the clock is ticking. We waited the two weeks Mochi gave us and we were discussing this, we waited now past Mochi. And here we go again. This isn't one that we can kick the can down the road.
Nobody's trying to kick the can.
We have to make a decision to. Have a full staff so that office is functioning.
What about this? Just because I hate red tape. And how that goes. What about if we make Lori the interim planning director while we do this big search? And we attempt to hire an outside consultant firm to assist. Lori in the preparation of anything that she doesn't feel like the larger stuff. And, and thus she would still be signing as the planning director, but if there's an appeal like a Bluebird or whatever. Then at least we can rely on the assistance of the outside consultant firm who has the depth and knowledge. Then it was unable to do that because I'm just looking at how the. Under canvas appeal went and everything, it went like that and we have to have someone. And so, um, then at least it would be, everything would be reviewed and then it would be helping Lori get to that point. Um, hopefully we don't have anything that gets to that point in the next two months or three months or however long it takes as soon as Rob gets it out on the street and. And the, everything starts flowing in very shortly. Um, but then at least we could process immediately the short plats and the boundary line adjustments. And that would give us time, um, to either fi- do an RFQ, which I think it's probably just an RFQ, we need qualifications. And then we can, uh, hire, attempt to hire someone to assist us. And I believe we still have money in our budget for this fiscal year for consultancy. So that should cover all of our bases while we continue to provide services to the public. I have full faith and credit in our planning staff that they know how, they know what they're doing when it comes to short plats and boundary line adjustments. We see them every week. So I'm not too worried about it.
So are you in agreements with Ms. Zoller that we just named somebody? Uh, an interim planning director and not change our code?
Lori. Do you want to speak?
Um, I, I'm certainly not Mochi.
Mm-hmm.
And I s- I've been here, November first will be thirty-two years. So, so I relatively comfortable with some things, but bigger projects, I, I need help. And I think you're well aware of that. And I would hope and pray you'd continue the search to find a. A actual director that I'm more than willing to help. Yeah, you know, we, we have to come up with some sort of interim solution, so.
My other worry about using the title interim director is a lot of people. Most people. Assume when they hear interim, that is, you're gonna be the director. So I don't know whether that might hinder our search efforts by using that terminology. To find a director when in their mind you already have one picked out. Um, that's why I would prefer something of a department manager or something like that and not interim.
I think we had this discussion a week ago or two weeks ago with Lori where she stepped up to the plate and was more than willing to take all of this on anyhow. And in fact, I've heard from the other girls too, how committed they are. Why do we have to apply a name to it? Lori's already doing, I think we, what did we call you a couple of weeks ago?
The problem with the name is because the code points to a name that has the authority. So if we're gonna change the person with authority, we have to change the code.
That is why I'm using the term interim planning director. That is why I'm using the term interim planning director, all agencies.
Okay.
That need C P As or it doesn't matter if it's. A city looking for a city administrator or a county or anything interim is not something that scares people away because. Everyone who does the job knows you have to have someone, and so I'm not worried that it's gonna scare other people away. What I'm trying to do was is make sure that we can continue to operate, we can continue to process the simple things. And we can get you the help that you need. I think you did a great job when you just said you've been here thirty two years. You've got some street cred, okay?
All right.
You're getting an award.
You can give her whatever title you want is my point. I I don't care. The point is, if you aren't following the code. That says the Clickitac County Planning Director is hereby appointed. It doesn't say interim. So you're gonna have to change it to interim. That's all I'm saying. I I agree with you and I'm willing to sign the document, but I'm not gonna sign the document if it violates county code.
Well, then we're gonna have to change code down the line anyhow, because it doesn't make the R C W.
I don't.
But.
I I would, I would respectfully. Um. Likely disagree with you on whether interim counts as a planning director or not. And I think it would be a very simple conversation with the prosecuting attorney to find the answer to that. If the answer is. Yes, you can use an interim, then I would be happy to move forward with this plan. And then we don't have to change county code in order to process.
At least get a legal opinion.
And I agree. So all three in agreement.
We wanna get these people who spent eighteen months working on their short plats and boundary line adjustments and everything, not having to wait till twenty twenty four.
Your. Recommendation then is that Lori is the C P A official, the interim planning director of all those well. And we don't have to change code and she's responsible to do all the C P As, all the flood pains, all the everything with help of a consultant.
On the things that she needs help for. That she feels she needs help for.
Why? I would caution this board. About giving her the big projects. Because she's never done the big projects, and I think you're opening yourself up to legal scrutiny when they get appealed. By not having someone with experience on the big projects.
Which is why you have a consultant who's got the depths to help.
I I'm I'm. I just needed to state my. Case there. Um, so who would like to put in a legal opinion? On whether interim needs to be added to the code in all of those areas or not.
Would you write that one? Or do you want me to do it?
How difficult is to just walk over there and have a conversation? I'd like to, you know, know.
Okay.
I would like it in writing so that I have proof. Of what the legal opinion was.
Okay, then you write it.
Your question, sir, but okay.
I can walk over and ask that question and I can request that he recap it in email to us.
That works. Anybody can ask the question and say respond, so we all hear it. Um, would work. If he's okay with that and. But he has a procedure for legal opinion, so I was just trying to follow his procedure for legal.
Consensus?
Fine with me. As long as I get a written legal opinion, I'm good.
Thank you.
Glad you came in.
Yes, yes, I'm glad. And once again, thank you to everyone and all the departments for helping us out.
I think we're all on the same page. Of trying to help you guys in the department and get you somebody to oversight and people to bounce questions off of. I think there's just three different ways to. How quickly we do that with legal and whatever, but I hope you understand that I. Doubt you have anybody. That's not hoping that you're all in wonderful successes.
I understand. All is good.
That was a mumble of words.
Right, no, no, and all is going to be better and and certainly if there's somebody candidates out there to be the planning director, I will. Gladly tell them that, yes, I'm just here to, well, I'm here and will stay here, but not in that role.
And hopefully if you. Uh, end up getting things that are. Uh. Like you say, over your head, past your bandwidth, too much work. Something uh, let us know and if we need to find more consultant. Help. That's my worry. If we stack all of Moshi's stuff on her along with what she's already got. I I think we're gonna have a problem.
We know that things are slowing down and they will slow down. Even after we hire someone because we have to onboard them, they have to get accustomed to the county, they've gotta get ready. It's gonna, it's gonna be a long winter.
Yes, but spring will come and soon it'll be summer.
Pretty summer grass is green. I don't know what's up with that.
I'm gonna frost soon.
We went from the brown season to the green season. We usually just go from brown to white.
Thank you again, Lori, for all your, for all that you do.
Oh, you're welcome. Have a good afternoon. And thankfully, Rebecca's here with something that Mochi signed before she left.
The last one.
Maybe that's what we should have did, had her pre-sign all the plots. Just give us ten plots pre-signed. That might not stand up to legal review either.
Plot?
Whatever, correct me tomato, tomato. Um, we are on time. Next item is a public hearing, public meeting, bid openings. We are here to consider the approval of boundary line adjustment B L A twenty twenty three dash zero three off Woodland Road.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do the public hearing first, but okay.
Isn't that what I said? What did I say?
You talked about the boundary line adjustment. That's a public meeting. We're gonna do the public hearing first.
Out of the public hearing second.
Okay. Come on, Jeff, do you get away? Hey, Jeff, just so you know, when you walk through that door, there was an eighty percent chance you were about to be the planning director.
It was close.
I I wasn't considering it.
Your timing was just so perfect. It was like, which one, which direction have we gone?
That's why you came back from vacation.
Fifty fifth? Whenever you're ready.
Okay, so this is a final approval boundary line adjustment B L A two zero two three dash zero three between the Robinsons and Three Point Landing LLC. Boundary line adjustment number B L A two zero two three. Dash zero three supposedly just the common property line between parcels zero four, one, seven, zero, six, zero, 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 two, zero, zero. And zero, five, one, seven, three, one, six, two, zero, 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 one, zero, zero, off of Woodland Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section eight township four range seventeen. And section thirty one township five range seventeen. Clickcat County in the Willamette, Rhode Island, um, Gondel vicinity. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Sanctuaries have been obtained from the road, health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval for B L A two zero two three dash zero three.
Hey, any comments from my segments?
None here.
Questions, comments, anything? Apparently there's a dog that would like to speak and make comment. Um. Did put a smile on my face, whoever that is. Allow your dog to call in daily. Yes. And and comment.
Mister Chairman, we have before us uh, the consideration of boundary line adjustment B L A twenty twenty three dash zero three off of Woodland. Woodland Road. The applicants are David Robinson and Three Point Landing LLC. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve B L A twenty twenty three dash zero three. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Oh, another. Um. Thing that could be. Um. A product of an internship is we have a policy of a thousand dollar month stipend, so. That's four thousand dollars a year. Figure that one out. For interns.
Okay.
If you wanna be fair anyway.
We have a policy.
All of our interns, um, which is currently, uh, and it's done in the past too, is currently Aaron Quinn, who's. Was the interim over behavioral health and. Um.
That's okay.
And Rob. And are currently on a thousand dollar month stipend. Alrighty, next up, uh, public hearing. Um, to go over our six-year road construction plan. Uh, with that, I'll declare the public hearing open for the six-year transportation improvement program. This hearing is closed to taking of any further public testimony. Uh, does the board have any clarification of public statements as well as any questions of staff?
Um, I would mention for the record, I had a chance to review all of the uh, written comments and um. While some of them were not germane, um, I took that all into consideration and I'm uh, willing and able to make a. Vote on this at any time. A second vote technically.
Um, I agree with that. I did the same and um. Well, I guess I'll state that I do believe some members of the public. Were. Uh, potentially using the six-year transportation plan to vent their displeasure with under canvas. Um. And I I believe some of them have some rightful concerns. Um, for the matter that is before us, that is the six-year transportation plan, I did not have any concerns. Anything? No. Any other discussion by the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, we have before us um, the. Resolution for the annual construction program as well as the resolution for the adoption of the six-year transportation program. Uh, we. Erroniously this morning, um, already voted uh, during the consent agenda to approve those. And I would like to, uh, my motion is to approve both the annual construction program and the six-year transportation program now that. Uh, the public hearing has been closed.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the six-year road program and capital or the construction program. Uh, any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes and clarification on the stipend. I just got a text. We do not have a policy. We have a practice. At least to my knowledge.
Also, that practice is not just for interims. That's when you're taking on another department, not when you're moving up to a position. So I would ask that the um. I would ask for the consensus of the board to have H R look at that and uh, come back to us with a recommendation.
I was just telling you that there could be a cost involved, so. That I don't know that we've made a decision yet to make him an intern, so.
Tell the auditor to text me next time.
Um, I don't, I don't believe there's been a decision yet, but I was just saying we might need to look at that as part of the wordage they use. Um.
Would you want us?
Apparently you're here for it. Go ahead.
You want us to look into that?
I.
Based on the verbal response of what Lori hears.
Okay. Yeah, the practice is for when it's full supervision of the department, not just selected.
What would happen in your eighty twenty situation then?
He'd do eighty percent of the work and I'd take eighty percent of the pay.
Just to, I did get an answer on my first question from P A, Elisa's gonna print it and share it with you. And then he has time for me after two o'clock. If I wanna walk over and ask the other questions.
Okay, the the first question?
Yes, she's gonna go pick it up. I printed it for you. He answered me back.
On whether interim would have to change the code?
Uh, yes.
Oh.
I. Once I eventually get a copy, I'll take you reading it.
I think that's what I asked him. We had such a good.
Um, um. We can cover that in a second. I do have, is there any new business, by the way?
Um. Continue continuation, new business further. Uh, we already did the court costs. I don't see. I don't uh, believe I have anything.
Alright, so I'll move on unfinished. And since. This is kind of ongoing, whether if it's in unfinished or board pending, I would rather do it now because we're gonna go no executive and nobody be around for board pending. Um. Superior or uh, public defender contract. We currently have a. Close. Document that I'm assuming. Is the formal. Uh. Bid that someone is making. Um. Because the past legal opinion was their paperwork did not. An email is not sufficient. So we're talking about uh, public contract, by the way. Um, so they resubmitted bids as I'm assuming is what's in the packet. Um, but we need board consensus to open the pack- packet and move forward with um. Which is here. Uh, to move forward with potential negotiations and or so we can even see what they wrote. Um, and so. Uh, we need board consensus to open the packet and move forward. Or not.
Sorry, I was reading this.
I know, we've got six subjects.
Do you wanna go back to that and come back to this in a second?
Uh, it wasn't the question you had, it was the first question. On whether, how how you go to it.
Are we higher? Was the first question.
Um.
Uh, which one are we doing?
I would say, shouldn't we um, set a time next week to open the? Um. Document.
It's not necessary.
It's absolutely not necessary. It's just another step. Um, I have a legal opinion right here. Uh, that does not require a formal R S P process, does not require a date to set an opening for the contract. Um, staff has also checked with. You know, I hit a whole bunch of other counties and nobody sets a time and date to open. The contract with the ones they've already went in, they just enter into negotiations. Um, we need to get this moving and I, I feel like it's being stalled. Um. So, I mean, we can set a date and open it next week. Uh, but we're not in a formal process that needs a date to open kind of scenario.
I would just mention that it was not added to the agenda and so. That was just my only concern, why we would open it next week and then we would read. We would open it next week and then we would enter into negotiations. Dairs. That was a joke.
Does that work? I think legally, do we have to have it on the agenda?
No.
No, we don't. Um. Well, if it's one more thing we can get done, we have the time. I'm not adverse to moving forward, no, I mean that.
We just need consensus and I may, let's open it today and Jake said, let's open it next week, so we just need to know exactly where you're at.
Let's open it today and get started.
Who wants the privilege? Usually it's not the chairman that does it.
No, it's always the person on the right.
It is. I'm just curious if it's changed from the email one. Are there two separates?
There's an.
Oh, is that the judge's legal review to add something to it? So it's my understanding that the judge looked at the past contract and said we needed to add something. Um, so we requested to add something and it sounds like they added it.
So it says here for twenty twenty, oh, twenty twenty.
For the mic, please.
Twenty twenty-four through compensation, the amount of ten thousand three hundred and eighty-two per month for each of us. This amount reflects the current monthly compensation of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three plus a four percent increase to our account for increases in the nearly every fast providing such services. For twenty twenty-five, we would request an increase in the proposed amount, a monthly compensation to ten thousand three hundred and eighty-two plus an increase equivalent to the cost of living adjustment granted to county employees. So it's a two-year contract.
Okay, so my understanding is it's two-year contract with the four percent color for this year, which is what we. Authorized for employees and union and the next year they. Two-year contract would be for whatever colas we pay employees next year. Um, but we'll have to get a copy of it and need to read it and have further discussion on whether we want to. Uh, blanket accept and or enter negotiations. Um, we can schedule that for next week if you want on the agenda. Time to discuss the issue and then you can get us a copy of all of this and.
In furtherance of these objectives, we make the following proposal. That would be that we be appointed to act in the official capacities, the O P D administrator under the new rule. Duties would include adding or removing attorneys from the side and council list, recruiting, training, developing, initiating case waiting policies as needed, monitoring attorney case load limits and qualifications, monitoring compliance with contracts, maintaining and providing lists quarterly to the judges. This would be in addition to the duties outlined in our previous contract and would require additional compensation. We would ask that this contract remain in effect for a minimum of two years.
But there was no amount attached to.
No, no amount. I was so with this, I would, um. I would request that, uh, we would enter into at least negotiations. Uh, this is a very, very expensive contract.
So if I'm reading this correctly, because I've had like three seconds to read it. Um, they've put in the part. Am I reading it correctly that they're asking to be the people that find the conflict attorney? Interesting.
And the attorneys for, um. In essence, taking over what we've, what staff has already taken over.
Again, I, I. I don't personally. Um, I would prefer our staff isn't having to do it, but I don't honestly believe it's a time-consuming issue. Um. If the program is fixed, if the program isn't fixed. You're gonna be paying them forty thousand dollars to operate a program because they can't find an attorney because we don't pay enough. I think if you actually paid conflict attorneys enough, they would be lining up at the door to do the work. But, um. Pay tomato, pay tomorrow, pay both. That's the sports decision. Um. So with that. I would say let's have staff each get us a copy of that, um, contact the attorneys and schedule them for a time. Um, check. Uh, have staff check with legal counsel to find out if. Those contract negotiations can be done in executive session. Which I think the answer is no, but I want a written legal opinion on the case.
So can I bring up something new? It's an idea of mine.
It's new.
Um, it's new and it's old. So watching the processes that went on for a long, long time, um. Through the negotiation of contracts in regards to the landfill. Um, years ago, it all resided around the, uh, solid waste coordinator person, Kevin Berry. And the contract negotiations were done at that level, which provided some shielding that came to the commissioners that ways. Because then everything was presented to the commissioners for their review and their say on where to push this information. Then it went to the next phase where we had, um, we parted ways with our next solid waste director. And David had stepped in during that time and started picking up those. Negotiations where before it had always been a negotiation of, uh, goodwill between the counties, keeping. Our finger on the pulse of what's happening within their county and it kept us at a separation of degree that was healthy for the commissioners. Not to be in that negotiation, just like the road department and them are not in their negotiations and. Because of the last year sitting in where I'm at, I see not only conflict with that. Um, I see potential damages with that, that. As commissioners, I believe we need to look at an outside contract negotiator, negotiation person for the republic contracts. For our working order and for our safety, I believe, um. That's what we need is that intermediate person doing the fielding, doing the contacts, doing the, uh, negotiations. And then the full contract comes forward to the board for our approval or not.
Are you talking with our contract or with republic negotiating contracts with other counties?
Uh, negotiations between us over tipping fees and things.
So where, where might I ask, are you gonna find the funding to hire this outside person to do all these negotiations?
I don't know, probably where you're gonna find it for the daycares, you know? Uh, this is something that I think is legal and that is needed and I just wanted to crack that door and start having those conversations.
Well, it is, I don't know who did it. Uh, when Kevin Berry was involved, I will have to check, but in my conversations with Mister Gilmore at Republic, uh, Ruby was never in that loop. Um, purposely and intentionally by the board of commissioners and I'm getting a. You agree or disagree? Well, she attended some of them with me too, but she was not actively engaged in negotiations.
I just think this is one of those long-term things that kind of went south over time. And it's a working order thing that I believe we need to clean up.
You know. From my previous discussions with, with ex-commissioners. The, while, you know, the, I was like, you know, that was, that felt really messy. And from what they've said is it's always been messy whenever you get into those type of negotiations and. They usually want to do the negotiations right when new commissioners come on before they get their feet underneath them. Which of course was the same instance with Commissioner Christopher and I, and, and so I was, I was warned about that. And so we did bring on, um, someone to help in the previous negotiations and it was the person who. Wrote the first agreement, so we did have that.
You do have.
We did have that, yes.
Well, it, what it comes down to is it's up to us to decide whether we want to. Provide some kind of discount on tipping fees and then when we do. Then I can understand hiring a professional, but if you're just trying to find a professional to. Answer the constant ask. For reduction. Uh, you're gonna have a large expense and then that person's gonna come forward to you and make a recommendation. Um. But really not a recommendation. They're just gonna give you, here is the information and you're still gonna have to make the decision. As the board of commissioners and take it with the good or the bad of your decision. That's, that, that is the job. Uh. It won't be a outside consultant telling us this is a good deal or this is a bad deal. Um. So I, I, I guess unfortunately I'm not.
I'd just like to open that door a little bit, let you think about it a little bit more and just. You know, kind of get that conversation on the table so that we kind of clean this up. Um. Doesn't need to.
I. I don't think it's dirty, um.
It's just, um, it's just a, um. Working order, uh. Just isn't correct for us as a board, the way it's functioning now. And so I would just like to. Going forward, we'll just keep an eye on it and see how we can come up with ideas or maybe. Clean up how the whole thing functions, uh, one point source, uh. Way to get this done. So that we know on the ground what's coming at us, what's been. Truthfully, what's been offered, uh, just all around good negotiation and good faith is what I'm looking for.
Think we're getting almost to the point that we can have this in the executive session since I think where you're going is more specific. If you don't mind.
I could be more specific. Yeah, that, that works.
Hmm. Any other topics for open session, any board pending we want to finish with?
So we've got a.
We have a second here somewhere? Oh, there's an add-on somewhere over this section.
Yeah, they, they offered the contract.
Rob's always back. You don't know if he wants to.
Alright, just an update, um, we have the interview set for natural resources on the seventh. Uh, Commissioner Anderson informed me he'll be, um. On a business trip for the county, so, but he said. Proceed that he didn't need to be here, uh, as for that, that's correct. So I just let you know it's on the calendar and, uh, Commissioner Anderson will not be attending.
Come see it on the calendar, so.
Well, I mean, it's, it's on our calendars.
It's on our.
On your calendar.
Alright.
So, okay. And Casey will be, uh, doing those interviews as I've discussed with the chair, so she'll be leading the interviews for the commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, FSEC, so apparently FSEC is continuing to. Email the county wanting to know if the county is willing to sign the, uh, reimbursement agreement. Um. And help facilitate permitting of Cypress. Uh, I'm a no. Um, Jake was a yes and Lori needed more in time and more information and to check things, so I was hoping that we'd have an answer.
I think we're still in the same shape for me because FSEC has not gotten their CIPA processed and they're waiting for more information to come in. Um, I don't see how I could. Uh, commit to a contract that's going to limit our amounts coming in. I believe severely, especially for even the road department. I don't want to commit to something till I know what we're committing to.
Okay, so I guess where I'm trying to come from is I'm trying to not. Uh, burden staff with time-consuming things. If, if the answer is no, I would like to just tell staff that we can reply to them that we're not interested and then. Staff won't have to answer the emails or the phone calls every week. Uh, but if you're, I, so I'm, I guess I'm looking for clarification. Is that. Concurrent that we're gonna tell them we're not interested? Um, or do you need more time to look and?
I think, I think more time because I believe, uh, but asking me the same question every two weeks or every month isn't gonna change. Until FSEC moves through their processes, we know exactly what the full. Uh, project is and the application is and the asks are so that we can work with our department and know what kind of work they're gonna be doing. I'm not gonna pre-negotiate a price. When I don't know how much work my staff is gonna have to do.
So is it your recommendation then? I, I'm just looking for.
Come back with a contract.
I'm just looking for an answer for staff to be able to give them. Um, so is something of the nature of. Um, we're still considering, we'll let you know when, when we have an answer.
Yes.
So that, that they don't have to answer it over and over and over and over again every two weeks.
Yeah.
And then if this board then decides to do something, we can, that individual can bring it up.
Yeah, because I think that, that should be part of the process.
That's fine, that leaves you open, but it keeps her from having to do a bunch more work too.
We should have a contract. We should be reimbursed, but I, I don't want to negotiate that till we know what we're doing.
So I can hopefully shed a little bit of light on this and, and that is, is when you do contracts, grants, whatever. Um, you, you start with, there's a do not exceed amount. Um, because right now the answer is zero, it's zero. And so when we were talking with them and talking with staff, it was, it, it could be up to about this much. This is what we can conceivably see currently. And so that's why those numbers got put in there. If you get close to that cap, then what you do is you go back to FSEC and you say FSEC. We think we're gonna go over this. We would like to have this increased and then FSEC will go back to the. Um, applicant and be like, cause everything that the applicant is reimbursing everything to FSEC, right? And so we're just getting in line with that. The reason I, I feel this is a good idea. Is, is because from what we're seeing currently with what the most recent documents that were. Put online are is that FSEC is likely gonna have a determination of significance. That determination of significance then starts the E F O E I S process, which includes scoping. I would like to be there at the table to comment during scoping and to have staff working on it, whether that's staff and interim planning director or more likely. Um, and in outside firm who's, uh, working with our. Planning director, then we could be getting reimbursed for those costs that we are expending that rather than it coming out of. Our budget for professional services, it's getting reimbursed. And that is why I.
Can you?
And that, I.
Can you come back with an amount, Jake, that you think is more appropriate?
My, well, fifty grand is appropriate. When you go over that, you, you ask for more and they give you more. The question I have that. Um. Is my problem, which I don't care if it said four million dollars. Uh, is the wording in it. That we will facilitate. That means you need to do it as they want to do it. If, if public works is spending time saying your road hall agreement is not up to snuff. We don't get reimbursed for that. We only get reimbursed when we say yes or no, sir. So is, are you gonna direct staff to say yes or no, sir? Are you gonna direct staff that might actually have a different opinion? We don't get reimbursed for that because that's not part of the contract. Part of the contract is we're facilitating the permit. We're helping them. Facilitate the permit. So I would, I would warn you that before you sign anything, regardless of what the money is. Um, check the wording.
So Commissioner, you, you brought this up multiple times and, and I, I respectfully think that. Um, that's not exactly the way it works that in order for you to get reimbursed, you have to be a yes man. That is, that is not, uh, that's not how these agreements. Are allowed to work because you, what you're doing is you're making a decision ahead of time. I think what we're trying to do is get paid for the due diligence that the county. Uh, professionals are doing with regards to this, just like if it was a project through us and we signed a reimbursement agreement. We, just because we sign a reimbursement agreement with these companies does not mean that the Board of County Commissioners is going to agree with that project. It just means that throughout this process, as you, as you go through it, we're gonna get reimbursed for our time so that the taxpayers are not paying for it. So I, I'm sorry, I respectfully disagree. If there are, uh, questions or concerns that you have with the, with the actual document. With the wording that you would like changed, I would absolutely be willing to hold this off. So that you can put forward those changes and we can get those to the prosecutor that continue to protect the citizens of the county. But I don't know what those are because I haven't seen you redline it out. But I would, I would love to see it redlined out.
I'm not redlining it.
I, I'll take a look at it and can we put it on the agenda for next week? And can you send me a copy of it, a new one? I have one. Okay.
Because when you, when you sign the contract, you're also. Signing a contract. So when that contract says you will facilitate a franchise agreement, that means you will facilitate a franchise. There's no, I'm not doing that or I'm not signing that or no, you have it in the contract, you will. So.
That is not necessarily how government works, sir. Not near.
Um, anything else on the FSEC matter?
Thank you for putting it back on the agenda. I know it's amazing how quickly things can drop off with how much stuff we have going on.
How much more you can read.
Are you ready for executive session? Or do you have anything else?
Everybody's done with everything else.
Um, I want to get this over, make sure we got everything sound.
It's the very end of the day. Uh, they're right here.
Just, just Jake.
Oh, I didn't get them.
Did you miss one? Did you miss one already? See, we gotta get those signed by lunch. That's the goal. Um, how much time do we think we needed for the executive? That's what I'm asking. It always seems to go way longer than we want and then we extend twenty-seven times for five minutes.
You want thirty to serve us, what are you, you doing?
Oh.
We got till six.
No, we don't, I, I have places, I gotta drive the Yekma today.
Oh, what time are you leaving?
Um, three forty-five ideally.
Well, we got two hours, you want to just run for two hours, what do you want to do?
The problem is you run out and then you're sitting there for two hours. Um, I don't care, twenty minutes, thirty minutes, fine.
Um, let's do it. Your choice, Chair.
Oh, let's do twenty.
Uh, question for Chair, would you like the solid waste director uh to remain present?
Doesn't matter to me.
I would like him here.
Works for me.
Thank you.
Anything else for the open session and the good of the order? No? Alrighty then, with that, we are going to enter into executive session uh to discuss solid waste contract negotiations uh that qualify for executive session in accordance with R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero prime one prime D to review negotiations of the performance of the publicly bid contract when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased costs. Um, issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session. And we will not uh have any of those issues when we open back up, so we will not open back up for Zoom. Uh, with that, we'll go in for twenty minutes. Um, and I'm gonna put that as we'll be back at two thirty-one. Even though that's twenty-one minutes, cause it's gonna take a minute for everybody to leave the room. Thank you all on Zoom land and come back next week, remember citizen comment time is nine o'clock.